Good to go, Mr. Wright? All right, thank you. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 Chaska Planning Commission Meeting. Tonight's meeting is being held at the Chaska Event Center at 3210 Chaska Boulevard and on Zoom for anyone who chooses to attend the meeting via Zoom. So the meeting's been called to order. Liz, would you roll, please?
Commissioner Brass.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Urbansky.
Here.
Lacy.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
And Chairperson Dalky.
Here. Okay, now I'd like to adopt tonight's agenda. I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Lacy and Commissioner Olson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is our visitor presentation. Is there anybody who has anything that's not on the agenda for tonight? Okay, not seeing anything. We will move on to item 5A. We're going to approve the December 8th Planning Commission meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review? If so, I'll take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Urbansky and Brass, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is the consent items for tonight. The consent items are to recommend approval of the final plat for the Del Webb at Chaska Second Edition, Polte Homes PC number 2022-08, and recommendation for disposition of the excess property near Highwood Drive. So I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent items, 6A and 6B.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Riley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right, that gets us to our action items. We have a long list tonight and a very full agenda, so we'll start right off with item 7A is a public hearing to recommend approval of the preliminary plat, preliminary site and building plan, and rezoning of West Creek Apartments from Community Asset Development Group, PC number 2022-02. Liz, you have the floor.
Preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat, and rezoning request this evening for the West Creek Apartments project. It was also formerly known as the Hickory Street Apartments, but since their concept plan that came through last month, they have dubbed it as the West Creek Apartments. And this is being proposed by Community Asset Development Group. The property is highlighted in blue on this aerial image. There is a city-owned, you know what, actually, I think I'm on my old concept plan, so bear with me, sorry. I have two presentations on my, there we go. The aerial image is showing the property highlighted in blue, and then there's a city-owned parcel that abuts it on its western edge that's shown in orange. So there is a portion of that that is being incorporated into this overall plan. I'm not going to go too far into the details of the background and history with this site and approvals. I think the more relevant ones this evening, it was back in May of 2019 when we saw the first concept plan come through for Hickory Street Apartments. This one showed the two-building layout for a market rate and a supportive housing apartment building, as well as the city-owned land being incorporated into that. They have done a lot of work since 2019 and since August of 2020, when our 2040 Comprehensive Plan was adopted, which guided the site to be downtown mixed-use, which opened up the opportunity for the site to have multifamily on it. So in January, late or early January of this year, the City Council did approve the concept plan for the revised plan that's being proposed this evening. And really what changed from the initial concept plan to this one is they did eliminate that market rate apartment building and solely went after the supportive housing apartment, and that's consistent with tonight. A couple changes have occurred since their concept plan approval. Some things that were brought up were the screening around the patio detail on the northeast portion of the building, so they've shown what that would look like, and I'll show that in a subsequent slide here. Parking was also brought up as a question of how that gets adequately provided on-site, so they have added additional proof-of-parking stalls to address that comment. And then they've also incorporated more within their usable open space provision to meet our code. So again, they're asking for preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat approval specifically for a 19-unit apartment building that supports young adults coming out of homelessness. The request also involves rezoning the property to a Planned Residential District, PRD 80, to be exact. So again, the apartment is slated for a specific demographic to help young adults coming out of homelessness, so these will be targeted to adults between the ages of 18 and 29. It will be managed by the Launch Ministries Group as well as Community Asset Foundation to provide programming services for the youth that end up living there. So there's a specific criteria that needs to be met in order for them to qualify to live in this apartment building, and that's listed on this slide. But I'm not going to go too far into detail on that. If there's questions about it, we do have the representatives here to answer those. So the property is about an acre and a half total, and then when you add in some of the city-owned property to the west there, it does equal to be close to two and a half acres, a little less than that when it may be all said and done. There is currently a single-family home and detached garage on the property, some scattering of trees, two large storm sewer pipes bifurcate the property, both on kind of the north and northeast sides and on the west and southwest sides of the property. So it really constrains it in terms of how far it can really be built out on that site. So this is the site plan being shown, as well as a zoomed-in detail of that patio on the northeast portion. But this building, again, will have 19 units within them. These will be efficiency units, so only one person will be living in each room. The building itself will be two stories high, and there will be one access onto Hickory Street North lining up with the bus garage site just to the north of them. So in terms of parking, they are showing 22 parking stalls to be constructed with the property. Four proof-of-parking stalls are being shown on the west side here, again, if needed, those would be constructed. But again, they probably would only construct the 22, as I see that's adequate for the type of the use of the building and the fact that the users don't all have vehicles for this type of housing. They will also have lease restrictions, too, that limit one vehicle per unit, too. Southwest transit will also be an option for this site if vehicles are not owned by the occupants, so they'll be able to tap into that service if they need transit options for the site. Pedestrian sidewalk will be extended on the north side there, so it currently stubs off just to the northeast there, so that would be extended all the way to the intersection of Hickory and Chaska Boulevard. This is the landscape plan, just to further emphasize how they're installing vegetation on the site, as well as the details around the patio space and ponding area. This is a section drawing showing some of that more mature growth around the patio space to show how it's programmed and planning to be screened. And then these are a couple renderings of the proposed building. So again, it's a two-story gabled roof building. They'll be using a Chaska brick-colored brick, as well as lap siding in both shakes and board and batten to provide some interest on the building. They'll have a covered patio area that, again, will connect into the patio space shown previously. And then a couple floor plans if we need to refer to them for any reason. But we are asking you to make a couple motions this evening. One is to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and the preliminary plat for West Creek Apartments, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And then also a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from the R2 zoning district to PRD 80. I also want to note that, in the planning session, they only make a recommendation to City Council, so it will go to our City Council tentative date of January 24th. So if people are following this item, there's another opportunity to participate in a public meeting on the 24th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant is, I believe, online to answer questions, so if you have questions for them, they can help in that regard. Always, thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. Before we open up the public hearing, anybody on the commission have any questions for Liz or the developers? Sometimes those answer your questions before you even ask them, so, anyone?
I have a quick question. Do we need to make a motion of approval to sell the land, or is that inside of this approval?
We eventually will.
Okay, so for the final plat?
Once we have the final layout of what's needed, we will come back for a separate motion on that at a later time.
Got it.
All right. Anyone else in our group? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 7:13. So a public hearing is, anybody's welcome to come up and speak. Please give your name and address before you start making your comments. I would implore everyone tonight, because as you may or may not know, we have a very large agenda tonight, so if someone ahead of you states your point, feel free to let that stand, and hopefully we don't have too much repetition so that we can keep the meeting moving along. So 7:13, the public hearing is open. Anybody have any, come on up, and any questions for us or the developers are here as well? Okay, I don't see anyone that wants to speak.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, Kevin, do we have any?
Do we have anyone online that would like to speak? Nobody's raising their hand? Okay, you're good online, too.
Thank you for reminding me. It didn't take me long to forget.
Hey, that's what we're here for.
You just reminded me before the meeting. All right, then at 7:14, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the Planning Commission for any further comment. All right, I know we've had quite a bit of discussion on this project going forward, so there, I think we're ready to move forward and take a motion to approve the preliminary plan.
Motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Select that motion.
All right, Commissioner Riley, we read the motion, just so we have everything.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from medium-density residential plan, residential development, PRD 80, and a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for West Creek Apartments subject to the 14, sorry, 12 conditions listed.
Separate, do the first and second on the first motion.
Yeah.
And then move on to the next one.
All right, first, let's tackle the motion you just read, so you're, for the apartments itself. So Commissioner Riley has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brass. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Now I'll entertain the second motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning of the medium-density residential art.
I think we did the apartments first.
Yeah, we did the apartments first. So this is for the?
Yeah.
Oh, I heard rezoning, I'm sorry.
Right, for the?
Nope.
Preliminary site and building plan.
First.
And the preliminary plat first.
Yep.
Okay.
That's already been approved.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, Liz, I maybe wasn't clear.
Yeah. Make a motion to recommend the approval of the rezoning from medium-density residential R2 to the planned residential development, PRD 80.
I'll also second that.
Thank you, Commissioners Olson and Brass. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, 7B is also a public hearing, and this is to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for River Valley Industrial Center. Joel Bootenhoff, this is PC number 2022-03. Liz, you are on again.
As Chairperson Dalky mentioned, we have a preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat this evening for the River Valley Industrial Center project, being proposed by Joel Bootenhoff. The site is located on this aerial exhibit of this slide, so the interesting layout of this property, its boundary is highlighted in red here, but it actually encompasses two different jurisdictions. The majority of it falls within the city of Chanhassen, which is actually south of this blue line here, and then the northern little sliver of it falls within the city of Chaska. So there's two jurisdictions reviewing this. The city of Chanhassen already went through their preliminary approvals of the site plan, so they have to go through final approval as well. They're at preliminary approval with the city of Chaska to kind of go over our pieces. So they're requesting, again, the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat specifically for a 81,660 square-foot office warehouse building. So in terms of our review and what that really entails is due to the fact that the roads are within the city of Chaska, both Audubon Road, also known as County Road 15, and then Stoughton Avenue. Being that those are local Chaska roads, we do have review authority or jurisdiction over the access points, the right-of-way design, and then some components related to screening and lighting, since some of our properties abut its edges, but only to a certain extent with those pieces. So the property itself is 24 acres total, and when you break that down by jurisdiction, three of those acres do fall within the city of Chaska. So the image being shown on this slide is an aerial image plus their site plan overlaid on top of it. With the existing site there, this used to be the Gedney Pickle Factory. There's a multitude of tanks and elevated walkways, even some small abandoned buildings, even a water tower out there that exists today. So all of that will be removed with this overall site plan. They are proposing a couple accesses onto Audubon Road. There's a full access that would line up with Crystal Lane, kind of towards its southwestern edge. They're also proposing a right-out access onto Audubon Road just north of that, and then an additional, although it is existing and will be slightly modified, access onto Stoughton Avenue here. So really, the only site piece within the site is a portion of the parking lot and drive aisle space will encroach or be within the city of Chaska's jurisdiction. So the line is kind of faint here, but that just shows kind of the jurisdictional boundary line there. Here's a more zoomed-in, clear image of the overall site plan. So the building in the front of it will be oriented to Audubon Road. There's a loading dock proposed on the rear of it, more so facing the existing building that's out there today. This is a clear image of where that access point is shown for all three accesses. Parking will be oriented to the front side of the building and along the north and some of the northeasterly portions as well. So related to the screening, which we have some review authority on, is with the loading dock being oriented in the rear here and towards Stoughton Avenue, we have provisions to make sure that piece is being screened. They are showing a berm and some landscaping along that southern edge. We would just implore that those areas be filled in to the best extent possible. I know that's a comment shared with the city of Chanhassen as well, and ensuring that that berm is extended to its full ability on that easterly side as it abuts the proposed access. In addition, with us having right-of-way design authority, we require boulevard trees for every 50 feet along the right-of-way or boulevard of a project, and they are showing that. And that basically falls in between the sidewalk and the curb of a road. And then as it relates to lighting on this building, so they are showing lighting provisions out there that do meet our ordinance, but also meet the city of Chanhassen's ordinance too, as far as we're aware. So the light poles will be 25 feet high. They do show a couple wall packs along the front side of the building, in the back side of the building here, both at 10 feet high on the front and 16 feet high towards the back there. And then they're also requesting preliminary plat approval. So the pre-plat would propose three separate lots over the subject area. Being that it is within two different jurisdictions, that's kind of why it gets to be more than one lot. So there's one large 13.39-acre lot for the existing building that's out there, a second lot totaling 7.89 acres for the proposed building, and then a 1.13-acre parcel that encompasses the parking lot there within the city of Chaska, and then one outlot for kind of that remnant area. And then just for reference, we have no authority over the design of the building. I just wanted to show the elevation drawings of the building itself. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for River Valley Industrial Center, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And like the other item, this item plans to go to City Council on January 24th, so if people want to follow this item and they have the ability, at that date. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Liz. Once again, before we open up the public hearing, I will let the commission ask any questions of either Liz or developer. Yes, we don't have any. Liz, do you know is Gedney's going to get tore down in this process, or is that, since it's not really in the way right now? Yeah.
Or they're using it now. They have a user in there, so they are.
All right, I was just curious. Okay, I will open up the public hearing at 7:26. Same process as before. Please come up, state your name and address, and if you have any questions for us, staff or the developer.
Hi, my name is Dustin Brockmeyer with Riverview Terrace, Mahone Park in Chaska. Our address is 300 Ellers Avenue. And I look at the plan, I don't necessarily have any problems with the plan. I think it's a good idea to have some more businesses down in our area and to have some more jobs and that type of stuff. When Gedney closed, we had a lot of people in the community that lost jobs, so having another business, if Joel can get this to work, I think that's a fantastic plan. I don't have anything except for I'm glad to see something happening in that property. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Wright?
Nope.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:27 PM and bring it back to the commission for any further comment before we entertain a motion.
Any more clarification on the questions that were posed from the developer here?
Well, we just got this today, so we haven't had too much time to review it, but something will certainly touch base with the developer on those pieces.
Resolved before final. Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, that being said, I know we don't have a whole lot of jurisdiction here on this one, but let's, I'll entertain a motion on this project.
I'll make a motion. I think it's a tough site, and it's a great reuse of it, so it's, hopefully it's a successful project. I'll make a motion to recommend a City Council approval of the preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat for River Valley Industrial Center, subject to the following 14 conditions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brass and Lacy. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Very good, thank you. All right, now, next on the agenda, 7C, we're going to entertain recommending the approval of the MBE Excavating Concept Plan, Sambatek, is that, on behalf of MBE Excavating PC number Liz, if you will.
Thank you. So like Chairperson Dalky mentioned, we have a concept plan this evening for MBE Excavating on the Lonno property. The applicant is also Sambatek, who are here on behalf of MBE. So I just want to go over kind of the three-step process that we typically go through for planning applications and kind of where we're at now. So with any or most planning applications that come through, they require three steps with the city, which within that require Planning Commission and City Council. with the city, which within that require planning, commission, and city council review and approval. So, the three steps laid out, the first one being is concept plan, and this is where we're at right now with this project in particular. But really, the purpose of a concept plan is to look at more of a high-level view of the overall project. It's an introduction to what they want to do. Usually, the concept plan aims to start to initiate those initial questions and concerns and items to address, to be addressed in the next step of the submittal. So, the concept plan, again, is meant to be very high-level, not a lot of detail, but meant to provide the feedback necessary to the applicant on subsequent steps. So, getting through concept plan would then get you to the second step, which is preliminary plan. This is the more technical analysis or technical drawings, such as engineering and architectural drawings, that get into more code-specific review and details for a project. This is when we start to provide more of an analysis on what's proposed out there from a code perspective. And at that point, the comments brought up on the plan should be addressed at that time. After preliminary plan gets you to the third and final step, which is the final plan. In this instance, it would be a final plan plus a conditional use permit, since they're doing an excavation-type use. So, really, at the final plan, and when we draft the CUP, this would be more, again, in a technical review, but dotting the i's and crossing the t's that came out of the preliminary review. So, again, we're at concept plan, so very high-level. This is an opportunity to provide feedback and comments and concerns for the applicant. The image shown here is an aerial of the actual site that's being looked at, more so kind of the area encompassed by the agricultural land here is kind of being looked at for the Lano or for the gravel pit operations. You can also see on this image the existing Lano gravel pit just to the northeast here. There's existing residential that pretty much abut this property and on all sides. There's residential on Edge Hill Road here, a couple residences right off of Chaska Boulevard, Farmstead on Chaska Boulevard, as well as some residential to the south within the city of Carver there. So, in terms of what we know of a background with this site, the existing Lano pit that I highlighted on the aerial is located at 3730 Chaska Boulevard. They have a conditional use permit for the gravel pit operation there. It's been in existence, as far as we're concerned, since 1979. This was approved by Carver County. And again, our documents show 1979, however, the property owners have stated that this pit has been in existence since 1929. And Carver County was the authoritative jurisdiction at the time they received the CUP, because they were a part of Chaska Township at that time. So, Carver County had authority over them when they were a part of the township. And then, this area, the whole Chaska Township area, was annexed into the city in 2005. So, in 2005, when everything was annexed, all of the uses at that time were annexed as well. So, the gravel pit was annexed at that time. The developer did conduct a neighborhood meeting in November of last year to basically, again, introduce the project to the adjacent neighbors to the site. So, there were a number of concerns that came out of that meeting and questions, and they all centered around the timeframe that this operation would go for, the type of material being excavated, access and traffic, what the existing pit status was, the erosion issue that exists on the site today, noise and dust and erosion control were also concerns. We also did receive some correspondence from other adjacent property owners outside of that meeting that we've shared as attachments for the public record. So, just to read those in, we received a correspondence representing for Joseph and Karen Atkinson, a letter from the residents of Highland Drive, which is in the city of Carver, and then also a correspondence from the city of Carver as well. In terms of how our comp plan and zoning is set up today, our comprehensive plan guides this specific area to be low-density residential. The current zoning out there is open, which means it's a holding district until development occurs on the site. Land excavation and filling-type operations in excess of 2,000 cubic yards require a conditional use permit with the city of Chaska. So, that's their ultimate goal with this project, and again, would be the third and final step if this continues in that direction. So, again, they're proposing this evening a concept plan request that involves the land excavation and reclamation on 13 acres of land, and then MBE excavating would be the operators of such use. In terms of kind of the existing conditions out there, so again, the total property is 13 acres, and it's actually split between two separate parcels. There's one eight-acre piece that kind of encompasses the south side of the site, and then there's a five-acre piece that would be a portion of the larger existing Lano property. So, five acres would come from that, so a total of 13 acres for where they're looking. With the existing Lano pit, the applicant has stated that they're nearing completion with that operation, and they're bringing in fill as we speak on that operation. Also, what's very significant for this site is there is a deep ravine that exists around most of the edges of the property. You can kind of see that better in this aerial imagery indicating the coloring of the significant photography out there. So, the red indicates more of a significant slope, and that's kind of where these ravine systems are taking place, is more so in between those red lines. So, there is some wooded steep slope from all appearances that exist on the property today. It's one of those pieces that would have to be formally defined in the field with city staff to determine where exactly that edge falls. So, that'll be one piece that'll need to be worked on moving forward. And then, I'll show some images in just a second, but with the erosion issue that I brought up before, primarily, the significant issue occurs on the south side where they've highlighted in red here. So, that is one issue that will need to be addressed moving forward as well. And lastly, one thing of note with this property is city utilities are not readily available to service this property, so the idea of development is not available at this time with where utilities are at. Here's probably the clearest image of what they've provided of kind of the erosion issue that occurs on that southern edge of the subject site. This is hard to determine where exactly the issue came from, but it happened shortly after the installation of Highway 212 and that infrastructure system. It started to create a problem out here, but the conditions today are pretty significant and something that will need to be readily addressed as we move forward. And as we get to the proposed concept plan and the proposed operations that they wish to do out here, for the purposes of this exhibit that's being shown, the purple area is really the areas that they wish to do the mining operations within. Again, this area has to be more defined once wooded steep slope delineations have been fully determined and tree surveys have been done as well in terms of what can be saved out there. But getting to what they would like to do, they're proposing a schedule from Monday to Saturday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They would have roughly two to four employees within this operation, which would entail five to six total dump trucks to be used for the operation itself. They anticipate roughly 100 to 150 trips a day within those operating hours, and those trips would fluctuate depending on the time of year. They say that during the summer months, those trips tend to be a little bit more, winter months a little bit less. They anticipate or expect that there's roughly 560,000 cubic yards of granular material. What they're aiming to try to excavate out of there is clean sand. And with that, they are showing, just based on their plan right now, to grade 70 feet below grade at this time. My star is a little bit off, so I apologize, but they did indicate an access point proposal near kind of the southern edge here, and that was to line up with the existing farm access that exists there today. So, the people who farm this land currently get access off of Chaska Boulevard through this residential driveway and then down and into their property. So, at this time, they've shown that that would be an access, a potential access point with it being on the county road and certain improvements or planned future access points that the county has already slated out. It doesn't align with Carver County's access plans for the county road. So, this point of access would have to be more evaluated from a traffic analysis perspective and city perspective and county perspective to see if it would be a viable location for an access point. And so, at this time, we don't have answers to that since we're at concept, but it would be something, as we move forward, that this would have to be properly vetted out with the proper agencies. And with that, there may be other access points that need to be explored for this situation. They do have existing access from their existing Lano pit or gravel pit area onto Chaska Boulevard. There could be other means that exist today that could be looked at further. But in any manner, the access point still needs to be figured out entirely. And then, lastly, on this slide, with any excavation proposal, there is an implementation of bringing back in fill to restore it to its existing condition at grade, in terms of a grading standpoint, but also bring in material that is non-contaminated, clean-type material that would set it up well for future development. So, with that, just want to pinpoint some of those items that need to be worked on as we gear up for a preliminary or a final on this type of request. Noise and dust mitigation methods will have to be provided as details in the next submittal. The access has to be further analyzed for in-and-out movements. A traffic analysis will be required to kind of further analyze that piece. They will also have to provide a detailed reclamation plan, which basically sets the tone of how the site would be restored back to a setting that would be able to be developed in the future. So, all the details within that are listed here, not all of them though. They'll need to show proposed mining contours, whether or not they will be in the water table with where they're mining. So, showing a de-watering plan if that's the case, providing a detailed design, grading and drainage, and stormwater management plan with this type of operation is always necessary. Also, providing a defined restoration plan for the erosion issue that exists on the site today will need to be provided in the next submittal. In addition, the tree preservation efforts need to be explored more. A tree survey and preservation plan will be needed to emphasize that. I think staff's position on that is, with this being a residential use in the future, it should be the same as a residential use, which we do require tree preservation efforts to be looked at, and so the same would apply here for this site. And that typically entails areas that are outside of ordinance-protected areas, so areas outside of the wooded steep slope is what we're referring to. The setbacks would have to be adhered to for property lines, structures, right-of-way and wooded steep slopes. And as it relates to that, we'll need to define or delineate in the field the actual wooded steep slope line, so they understand where the setbacks apply to. We would also like a more defined timeframe of the operation's existence to understand how long this may last, so we can apply our CUP appropriately. And then, lastly, with this type of operation, we typically look at a financial surety or assurance to be established with it. So, if any of the CUP is not complied with, or if the restoration plan is not complied with, there is a capability to be able to do that with that assurance. So, with that, again, there's things to work on as we move. Very, that concept, pretty typical that we have these items to address and give that opportunity to the city to submit all. So, with that, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan for MBE excavating, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. Also, just want to mention, and you'll hear it several times tonight, that, again, if you're following this item, there's another chance to participate in a public meeting with the City Council on January 24th is when it's tentatively scheduled for. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise I know the applicants are also here.
Okay, this is a concept plan, so again, our question for staff or someone from MBE or Lano's that are here?
Right. That's it. We haven't had really any discussions with the county yet as far as the road.
Well, we have. They did send us a correspondence to basically indicate that we still need to review it further with a traffic analysis and have an access plan that aligns more with their future intentions out there. So, there's work to be done. So, they've provided those comments to basically say we need to evaluate this more. Yep.
And do they elaborate what their future plans were as to access points, what their expected access points are for this location?
They have, in terms of the corridor study that they've done, yes. Have to work through those details.
You talked a little bit about this today, but, and maybe the developer, somebody else has to go through it, but I'd like to understand how this project will help take care of the erosion issue that's going on there right now. It looks pretty serious and looks like it could get worse. So that, is that something we can address tonight? What would...
Details of that may be something for the applicant to weigh in on, how they envision that playing out.
That would help make the project more palatable also for everyone if we knew we were, it was also fixing a problem. Maybe the, somebody from either Lanos or MBE can come up and...
Good evening, planning chair, commission members. My name's Eric Miller. I'm a civil engineer with Samba Tech. Our office is located at 12800 Whitewater Drive, Menetanka, Minnesota. We represent MBE Trucking and also the Lotto, Mark, Rick and Randy, underlying property owners. So thank you for listening to this item tonight. Ms. Hanson did a very good job of articulating, you know, the state we're at a concept, and staff has done a great job of helping provide clarity to the process if it moves forward. We know this is a bit of an unusual request and maybe doesn't have a real defined process, so helping us understand that from the city's perspective is very helpful. And also hearing any questions, not only from the neighbors, but from also the planning commission is helpful as well. So I'll get to your question in a second, but we certainly recognize the work to be done with respect to slopes, surveys, tree inventories, stormwater, traffic, access, operational details and restoration of the site. That was also articulated by Ms. Hanson in the staff planning report, and should all parties decide to move forward with this, we recognize those will be, need to be done in much greater detail. With respect to your question, we recognize that the scouring of the property is not a result of the current agricultural conditions, it's not a result of the current operations on the gravel mine. We believe it's a result of likely stormwater volume increase from activity related to development upstream, whether that's as Highway 212 or some other development. We recognize likely, and being a professional in the industry, that it's likely that increased stormwater volume coming through that area in a channelized manner has begun scouring that property quite significantly. I believe Mr. Lano, Mark Lano, can further elaborate on a storm event that happened a few years ago where the stormwater overflowed from one of the sedimentation ponds located on the south side of 61, over 61, in excess of the capacity that that culvert could take, and began that scouring process with the clean sands. Once a scouring process like this begins, it continues to be a real problem. I think what we have in front of us with the application is also an opportunity for us to leverage our engineering potential, the expertise of MBE Trucking, and an opportunity to engage the city, the county, MinDOT, or any other agency, having the watershed, having control on these, on what is the issue and what are opportunities to resolve the issue. We need that discussion to occur, and I believe that would be certainly a critical part of the next step so that we can understand what needs to be planned for and what needs to be incorporated to the proposed project. We can't take on resolving an issue like this independently of those other agency parties. They need to have buy-in, consensus and support on what is the cause of the issue and what is the path for resolution. If we can come to a consensus on cause and resolution, I think the technical solutions are probably not so difficult. And having an opportunity where it's going to be a mass grading operation, going in and stabilizing the area that's been scoured and eroded significantly, stabilizing that area and putting some sort of stormwater BMP in place to manage and control that flow that is either coming through the property and/or will be, you know, a result of the operations that are going on. But certainly if there are improvements that need to be done upstream because determined that the problem is, cannot totally be accommodated on-site, you know, there might be further discussions with Carver County, the city, MinDOT, watershed, on what those improvements that need to be addressed upstream to mitigate the concern. We certainly recognize the concern. All parties are willing to incorporate the resolution of this in some capacity if we'd be fortunate for the project to move forward and understand it's going to take some time and additional detail discussions to resolve.
So, I got a question. So at this point in time, based upon your professional opinion, I mean, is it fixed, I mean, do you have any idea how to fix the problem or envision what is happening, what would be the solution, or is it really open-ended at this point?
I would be speculating at best, but typically, I would be speculating, but I believe there's an increase of water coming through this corridor that was not intended to cross 61 and come across this property in the manner it is. That area is not stabilized to accommodate additional runoff that is coming there for one reason or another.
But I meant like, how would you envision stabilizing it?
How would you stabilize it? Well, first, I think you have to address why is that additional runoff coming through the property? And is there something that's failing upstream? It could be mitigated upstream by different oil control structure, recognizing there's a failure in the system. I don't know what that is, but you could mitigate the issue up there and then come into the property. And with, you know, this type of operation, we have a lot of material and we have access to control, stabilize and create stormwater BMPs to control additional stormwater runoff that would be necessary, not only for the project, the project would be triggering those improvements in of itself, but also if there's the needs and the discussion with the other agencies on accepting offsite runoff through the property, we could explore opportunities to, you know, understand what that magnitude of that volume is going to be and how to appropriately address that.
So you control the flow upstream so you can reduce, so you have less volume of water. Are you still going to need to stabilize the side, you know, the sand that's eroding? Is there still going to need to be onsite stabilization, even if... And is that just with a better fill? Cut and fill, or what do you, I mean, what are, do you, some sort of concrete option? I mean, what's the, what's the typical, I'm just kind of curious, what's a typical course of action?
Certainly, the material we're going to be bringing, importing back to the site is not going to be clean sand. The operation wants to export the clean sands that are more highly erodible out of the site, and likely they're going to be importing more compactable materials that can remain in place in a stabilized fashion.
Sure.
That's just the nature of what the proposed operation is. That's what they've been doing up on the existing pit, pulling out the clean sands and, you know, importing material that's highly compactable and can be placed and stabilized in a manner that it's not going to erode. I can ask additional questions or I can come back up in the public hearing, so I guess I'm open to...
Public hearing, concept. We'll have one later.
Not really a question, just more of a, the points I'll be looking for at the next step here is, you know, making sure, safety is a huge issue on that road, to make egress out with 100, potentially up to 150 trucks a day going through there, and then making sure that as these trucks are out of it, they're not leaving residue on the county road. So a good, you know, kind of ingress egress, preferably with something that's going to knock off the loose chunks on the trucks there. And this is mentioned also, but just kind of having a fuse or a deadline or an idea of when you think this would be done and reclaimed. And then I think we're all concerned about the scouring on the ravine too, to my knowledge, you know, there's a problem now, it's starting upstream somewhere. We got to figure out that before we try to fix it and then have to fix it again type thing, but, okay. A hundred-year rain happens about every, I don't know, eight months or so right now?
And I would assume you would need to figure out that issue and work on getting it repaired in order for the site to operate properly in the first place, right?
I believe that would be for the operators to take on the site and operate in the fashion they would do, that would be their, one of their first orders of business. Again, assuming we can come to a consensus on how to get the, how to get the issue resolved appropriately.
And then I assume this would be your area. I'm a little maybe concerned, or you should talk with the neighbors about hours of operation. I don't know if seven to seven, six days a week, that seems like a pretty significant amount of time for trucks to be going in and out. Maybe, obviously during the construction season in the summer, it might be appropriate Monday through Friday or something, and maybe a shorter day on Saturday. But also, I'm thinking when you hit the winter, it gets dark so early in the day that they'll, you know, you're going to have the site lit up more with, you know, truck lights coming in and out of there all the time. So I think that's something to address for preliminary as well.
Appreciate that. Dan Zimmerman with MBE Trucking is in attendance and I'm sure taking notes of your comments and recognizes a more detailed operational plan is going to be a critical part of the next step.
And just to expand on that, in regards to trucking hours of operation, is there any idea at this point, are we talking months, years, to complete the whole operation?
I believe in our thing, we said anywhere from five to 15 years. I think, Dan, you can come up if you like, but I think Dan would tell you that it's somewhat dependent on the marketplace and the demand. You know, a couple of large-scale projects can, you know, consume and backfill that amount of volume in a fairly short order. An aggressive marketplace can consume that. I think we're fortunate that the city of Chaska is, you know, becoming a developing community, an aggressively developing community, so likely there's going to be opportunities within this community that are going to need to source that material. I know our firm is working on other projects in Chaska where that's certainly a need. So, you know, proximity to the source of material is certainly a cost component in driving the ability to move that material, source it and expedite, you know, the process of excavation and backfill.
Is there any, dealing with the erosion and whatnot, I mean, obviously, you know, it's got to be addressed before you can start operations, but, you know, at what point in time do you understand your, have your fixes really fixed the problem? Or is it just delayed it a little bit to be able to capitalize on being able to excavate what's sitting in the field? Because, I mean, back to, one of the conditions is, you know, the financial side of things, what limitations or expectations is city going to have on the project to make sure that what they've done is a permanent fix? Because knowing that the ultimate desire is for that's going to be expanding into residential. So it's kind of a twofold thing, which is the, you know, the fixing, the permanent fix of the problem, but then also the retaining of the vegetation as much as we can so that when it does turn into residential, it can actually be used. Because looking at the, you know, looking at the aerial, just across the ravine, you've got this big wide open space that's the current operations. You cross to the west and you have at least a decent vegetation with a small open field. Once you go in there with, you know, do the mining, you're going to eliminate a lot of those trees that are in the line of fire for, you know, pulling material out. So I've got big concerns about the viability of making it a, an operation that's worthwhile while keeping the balance of fixing the problem and retaining the current resources that are there.
Excellent question. Fixing the problem is going to come at a significant cost in of itself that I don't think the landowner is willing to bear, and quite honestly, you know, comes with significant of a cost if this project moves forward. It's not a problem that is the landowners, the landlord didn't create the problem. MBE Trucking is willing to participate in a process to evaluate and potentially determine the significant cost that it's going to take to resolve that issue. Willing at this time to cooperate on evaluating, again, what the issue is and trying to come to a consensus on how to resolve the issue, but it's going to take effort from not only the applicant, but also the city, county, watershed and MinDOT on understanding why it's occurring. Resolution's going to also take fairly significant operations on that end of the property just to mitigate the issue that's currently going on, so.
Sure. I have a whole series of questions. Would you indulge me to be able to run through them?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So just so you know, I mean, I, my purpose is, you know, so this is the first and three steps of the process. So this is a concept, and what's important is education and getting information out, right? So that when ultimately, the goal is to get you to final, and the goal is to get you a conditional use permit. So that's the goal for you, but the goal for you, for our residents is that they can live with this, and they'll have to live with it, you know, for a multitude of years. And it can have a detriment to their lifestyle, you know, or to their finances, right? So I'm going to ask you questions, you know, and I tend to, you live by the rule that, you know, if there's an elephant in the room, let's throw it out there. So at the beginning, so that, so that people go in, you know, evolve through this in an informed way, and you mentioned building consensus a number of times. So the goal for you is to build consensus with the people behind you. Okay? So, so just shed some light, you know, we talked 560,000 cubic yards of sand. What's the street value of sand per yard?
It's a good question. Dan, maybe, sure, some of these questions might be pertinent for you as well.
I just want to put it in perspective of what you're developing, so.
Value of sand, Beulah's down there, Carver, they'd sell sand probably $6 a ton FOB, so...
It's a ton, so, you know, we're talking 10 bucks a yard, somewhere in that range.
So if there was five, oh, 500,000 times...
So this is a...
Thousand, eight times six, so roughly, what would that be? Five million?
It's a $5 million, you know, the value of the material is about $5 million.
Sand?
Yeah. And then there's a...
Cortified.
And then there's a, there's a fee for material coming back in.
Back in.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing, so.
So, okay.
Depends on the project, so. And that, for, that's our, you know, there's a problem down there with the ravine, you know. We started this process not realizing how bad that problem was. So we don't want that problem either, but now we're... So we don't want that problem either, but now we're, we're realizing that these hand in hand, that we got to fix one to get at the other.
Right.
So, uh, for us, it's, uh, you know, let, let, yes, let's, let's address this issue. Needs to be fixed. We want to work with both the property owners there and, uh, yeah, for business, we're trying to also make, you know, money eventually with this venture. I mean, it's a lot of work, a lot of upfront costs for us, a lot of operational costs and, you know, uh, that's the goal. You know, we have been over in, uh, Lannos since late nineties. So, you know, we have been in the, you know, when we're talking about truck volumes, the truck volumes will be exactly the same as what they've been in the last 25 years for the most part. You know, there will be some additional because of sand going out, more sand going out initially. But, you know, those volumes aren't going to change as much as, you know, when, when we're talking all this additional traffic, that's not true. Uh, the, the, the one side is going to finish up and the other side is going to, is going to start. You know, there will be overlap there, you know? Once you finish one up, then we can go to the next.
Additional questions or?
I've got a bunch.
Okay.
And like I say, I'm not beating you up. I'm just wanting, I'm just wanting to get this out.
You want to get this out to these guys too? Yeah, that's what.
Um, there's talk about two additional properties to the west of you that are for sale. Are those, I assume that the resource extends along that bluff to the west, right? The sand.
It probably does. We don't know that for sure. We haven't, we haven't, uh, drilled or we have actually, uh, I think that property just got sold. Uh, the worm property to a developer. I'm, I'm not positive on that.
I'm not either. So as far as you know, that there's not the potential to extend this pit into those two properties to the west? It's?
Um, so if you think about what that is, it's a big hole in the ground. So our goal is number one, get in there, fix, fix the ravine, stop the washout. Number two, start our operations in there. Number three would be, yes, we would, because that's going to be one big residential development someday. So, uh, would we necessarily mine all that? I don't know. We don't know if there's aggregates in there or, or what the kind of, what kind of value that is. But I think eventually, yes, that whole site is going to be raised up. Whereas I think it's the worm property, there's five, six, seven acres right there. Yeah, I would say, uh, you know, that's, we want to get that up back to the road, but up so it's not in a big giant hole down in there. So, so it's usable.
But not expanding our operations onto the worm property, if that's your question?
No.
Right?
No, not at this.
And are, are those two properties within the city's jurisdiction to the west? Oh, they are? Okay.
I just want to clarify, the application is only for the Lannell property. They're not talking about a mining operation on those other two properties.
Understand, but it, uh, you know, there's a progression to the west. So I want to, like I say, get the elephant to out there.
Yeah.
So there's, there's potentially a resource underneath those properties. And what we do here with regard to this conditional use permit probably has implications for future conditional use permits on those two properties.
Fair. We, we haven't had any discussions. We don't know if there's anything there. The intent for this is no, we, you know, it, it would, I mean, maybe the, maybe you do drive down and it's a, a depressed, further depressed area, you know, somewhere, but I mean.
Um, you know, commentary with regard to the erosion, you know, as far as me as a commissioner, I mean, you talk about building consensus with, um, MINDOT, Carver County, the watershed, or, you know, if the city has some culpability on upstream implications. I really don't care about that implication or that consensus. At the end of the day, me as a commissioner, I want assurance that, uh, the scour is not going to be, continue to be an issue. So you got to come up with, you know, the expectation is that you're going to go do that, but it, when you come back for preliminary, we want to see an engineered design, you know, to, to reflect, or I do, I want to see an engineer design reflect how it's going to be fixed. So, and I understand you're not there yet.
I don't think we can fix the issue without consensus amongst those other parties.
And you got some work to do there because I, I know how it is to work with one agency, let alone possibly three. Um, you talk to us about your dust mitigation. You know, you've obviously got experience in your existing pit, um, to the east. You know, what, how do you handle it? Have there been complaints? What's your, what's your record of performance?
Yeah, it's, it's a constant battle. Uh, we do what we, uh, can with, uh, you know, just keeping the, the roads clean and sweepers and, uh, we're in mud, you know, so we, we do what we can. If we can't operate on some days, we can't because it's too muddy. It gets too, you know, it's Minnesota. Uh, so what's needed is if, if there's dust flying through the air, we, we need water. Uh, water trucks, water, uh, water wagons, whatever that is out on the road and, you know, you're just like a normal construction site, you're going to have big, long, uh, construction entrances. Now, on something like this, that's more, uh, longer term, it's going to be more, it'll be more permanent structures that, you know, we can maintain every single day. On a regular construction site, you're just, you're dealing with track out and, you know, stuff for a month until they're done. For us, it's, you know, we hit it every single day. It's important. We don't, we're not perfect. We know that. There's some days that, there's some stuff out in the road, we don't quite see it, but you know, we, we, we work with the Lannos and we work with the city. If there's something there, if there is a complaint, we're, you know, we try to get out there as, as soon as possible. And it's mud, it's dirt. I mean, it's, but we, we, it, it's our business, you know? It, we, we don't want to, we don't want to make everybody in the neighborhood mad and suffocate everybody in dust. We understand that. We have operators on the ground that we don't, they don't want to sit and suck on dust either. So that, I mean, you got, we have to work in that environment as well, so.
So there's talk that there's not, um, city of Chaska, uh, your utilities, so there's not city water. Do you have a well on site in order to fill for, for water or how do you get it?
Not on that property, not at this point. Um, uh, we use, uh, metered if we, if we need water and go, we've got, been down into Carver, we get metered water, you know, uh, and put it in water trucks.
For your setup?
If needed.
All off of hydrant?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, you talk to us about your, your history with noise and, uh, you talk, you know, what, you know, what, what type of equipment? What's the, what's the expectation with noise? How far away will you hear it?
We run in two pieces of equipment on average, minus maybe a sweeper and, so you might have three or four pieces of equipment running. Um, it'd be just the same as when they built this building. I mean, you're going to have, well, actually, no, it won't be, it'll, quite a bit less. When they built this building, which we built and a lot of it went over to our Lannell property and materials came back, uh, you know, they had probably, uh, five skiddies out here. They had, you know, when, uh, who did it? Fratellone did it. I mean, they probably had three backhoes and they, when they go, they go, they get it done. For us, we just need one machine out there to push off dirt and we need one machine to load. So the, the noise is, yeah, it, you got machines running. Um, for us, our advantage, when I look at it, the one thing that I, I, uh, we're down in a hole, you know? Uh, for, uh, for the most part, I mean, you know, especially the people on the Carver side, you're not going to hear a lot of that. I mean, you got, um, Highway 61 with all the traffic there, the, 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 the most noise I think is going to come from the trucks. That's what you're going to hear. You're not going to hear the equipment as much.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's, it's basically a dozer stripping and pushing and then you have a loader loading trucks?
Yep.
And there's not a crushing operation with a conveyor into a stockpile?
Yeah, we wouldn't do, there won't be anything like that, no. Oh, there might, uh, uh, it wouldn't be something like you would see down at the pits down there, uh, at Mueller, if you ever gone through those pits and they got conveyors all over the place, you know, is?
Says pit, that's what they think, right?
Yeah, and it's nothing like that really. It is, we set up on, we have a big, you know, track hole and you sit and we load sand. Uh, it's, there, from what we can tell, there's no rock there. So it's just, we're just loading sand and that would go directly into a truck. It would, we wouldn't be screening that. And then when the material would come back in the same trucks, it would basically go in the same hole that we took it out of. So as we take it out, we're filling it back up right behind it for the most part.
You know, I, you know, there's, there's a property that's very close, you know, just on the other side of the scour, um, problem. How about vibrations, you know, from your operations on that property? Is that something that you guys will be looking at and to evaluate to make sure that you're not going to end up, you know, causing some damage and having some, some issues with them?
Vibration specifically, only that, nothing else, not noise, nothing, just vibrations. Uh, you know, to fix that void, that washout, inevitably we have to have heavy equipment on it. So, you know, we're going to have to be close to that shed. The house, I think, is far enough away. Whether I know is that going to affect them in the house, uh, you know, will they feel it? They might, I don't, you know, it's tough to tell. I, I guess, we're kind of.
That, I think you guys should do some due diligence and just, you know, them feeling it, you know, is one thing, but, um, you know, whether there's damage to the structure is another thing. And, and I've seen where that, you know, or even the perception of that creates problems for you as the operator.
Great point. And vibration monitoring is a fairly, uh, minor expense to an operation like this and can be part of the testing protocol when we're working in close proximity to, um, something like a residential house where there would be that, that compaction material and, and vibratory rollers or, or things like that. So we can certainly take that into consideration with some of our, our testing protocol, uh, as part of that operational plan.
Okay. Um, you know, I assume as far as the fill coming in, that you're doing environmental screening if, uh, to make sure that it's, it's going to be clean and, and when you go to develop it.
Comes in is, 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 uh, you know, typically on a, either residential, commercial site, it has to be proven clean before it gets onto the truck, you know, if it's coming to our site, so.
And that's. Regulations and restrictions is, would be part of the permit anyway, correct?
Uh, you, I understand that there's, uh, some, your history of, um, or maybe concerns about flooding at 3880 Chaska Boulevard from a box culvert that goes under 61. So my assumption is, you know, since that, you know, you're taking vegetation off the property, you're going to be increasing the, uh, you know, or reducing the amount of time, you know, on these storm events for that water to get to that box. I assume your drainage design is going to account for that to make sure that.
We want to have happening, what's happening to this property happen to properties downstream of this. So absolutely, there's going to be a lot of scrutiny and, and requirements regarding stormwater and those are part of the regulations that we have to comply with.
All right.
For the step of operation.
Good. And I, I assume that that property owner is here, but I think it's important for them to hear that and know that you'll be, you'll be doing that and your PE stamp will be going on it.
Turns out.
Okay. Um, you know, the, uh, the property, it looks to me, you know, the property at 3950 Chaska Boulevard, you know, there isn't any discussion of screening, but I sure wouldn't want to, you know, look out the back window and, and see your pit operations for five to 15 years. So when we get to preliminary, I, I'd like to see some screening incorporated into your, your grading plant. And I know that that has to, you, you're going to end up having to strike a balance here between this erosion, uh, scour correction, but it's also going to, I'm, I'm going to want to see, uh, some screening for those residents, so. You know, as far as the, uh, the timeframe, you know, we talked about five to 15 years. To me, it's important that the conditional use permit have a duration on it because I, um, you know, the discussion about property values and is real, you know, for, for these folks. And if it's open-ended, then that is a permanent impact to them. If it's, if the conditional use permit is five years and it's something that they can show to a potential, um, you know, buyer, then it's not as much of an impact. It's still an impact, but it's less of an impact. So, um, when you come back for preliminary, you know, we'd like to hear something more, more specific that, um, you know, it's going to be X number of years so that they can then therefore plan for that and, and ultimately live with it in some regard. Does that, does that make sense to you?
We spent some on, um, that plan and, and come, come back to with more details on, on what we believe that, that looks like.
And I don't think it's unreasonable.
I should ask Nate and, or Liz about that as well. Can, you know, can, can a CUP have a definite? Start and finish date that can be reviewed?
Yes, the C, the CUP, we can put a timeframe to it. Um, do you think that it's important as we're thinking about that to think about enforcement and administration? Um, if you've got a five-year, you know, timeframe on the CUP, just to put a number forward, um, and maybe they're a third or two a half through at that point, um, coming back and causing them to shut down, although CUP may permit that. Um, you just think about the, the feasibility and the ability to actually execute. Sometimes that can be a challenging thing, right? Um, there's the political discussion around that as well. And those are things that we got to think about is, you know, if we want to put provisions into the CUP, there's a lot of things that we can do. We also want to be careful that we can follow through, um, and enforcement on that as well. So I'm not trying to give an answer as to what the proper length should be or anything at this point, but just kind of giving that perspective as we're thinking some of that.
Anything else, Mr.?
Uh, you, I guess I would like to, you know, the, the count of the access off of Chaska Boulevard, it sounds like it's, it may be problematic with Carver County. So, uh, that you have a, a route envisioned to come off of property to the east. And so how would you cross the, um, the ravine?
So this, definitely this is, would be the preferable way for us. It would be the less, uh, impact wise, I mean, it would.
And safest.
Yeah.
To cut a new access off of the county road would be preferred?
No, preferably we'd want to go across the ravine from the old property. All the traffic goes out the same road and, um, you know, all the, uh, we, it's not ideal out there, we understand that. So we'd have to put in some, you know, uh, some additional lanes and, and work on that. So for us, it would just be a big, in the ravine, we, we want to just put a, an engineered box culvert down there or, uh, whatever it would take to, to catch the water and then we'd just fill over the top of it, just basically be a temporary road for us. So it wouldn't be something we want to, you know, uh, build permanently, we, but we, we understand that probably have to be engineered for, uh, for the water. And I know we approached the city council two or three years ago on it and they're just kind of this about it, so. Um, but it's something we want to readdress. Um, it would make, uh, it easier for us and keep that, that traffic away from, you know, this coming out, especially, uh, that address, what was that address, the house rate?
Thirty, 3850?
3850, yeah.
3950, sorry.
Yeah, because, uh, for us to, to access the site, no, we do want to move it to the north eventually away from the house, but we have to, we're going to have to fill up next to the road to, to get that access in there. So inevitably we're going to be, you know, kind of sharing that, that access with that house. So, yeah, for us, that, that's what we, that's what started it was using the ravine access and, um.
And, and the, the truck volumes are comparable, are going to be comparable to what has historically happened on the, your east pit?
Yeah, yeah.
How has the function been for that entrance off of Chaska Boulevard?
I didn't understand that, sorry.
So you want to, you want to use the existing entrance off of Chaska Boulevard? How, how is? How has the function been for that entrance off of Chaska Boulevard?
Didn't understand that, sorry.
So you wanna, you wanna use the existing entrance off of Chaska Boulevard? How, how has that functioned over the years?
Uh, it's okay. We haven't, honestly, as long as I've worked for MBE, it's been ten years. We've never had, had some close calls down there. It's not perfect, you got that, that Y, it's not ideal. But it's, we haven't had any accidents out there for the most part. I know the neighbors have complained and truck wreckers, I can't control them all. They stop in the driveway and I mean, and, and that's what we wanna keep an open dialogue with the, the neighbors, cuz we get after those guys. We don't wanna cause problems. But over the years, yeah, it's worked fine for us. We've, uh, we had some vegetation crawl. Cut all that back so everybody can see all the way down that. You know, that pit used to run when that was two twelve. There was, I mean, there's still a lot of traffic out there, but there was a lot of traffic out there. And that, that was, that was dicey back then, you know, just, um, I wouldn't, I would say now, uh, the traffic levels are a lot less and it works very well for us now, so.
Well, that's all I had for you. And like I say, I mean, I, my goal is, you know, ultimately you get to final and we, and you have a conditional use permit, we approve it and that these residents can live with it, you know, and then, and they feel like we've adequately addressed, um, their, you know, concerns and, and, and also that you guys can make a profit, so. So I appreciate your answers.
Back and really does provide us clarity for what the expectation and coming back is gonna be.
Sure, I'll yield, thank you.
Last question, is, with the proximity to the Minnesota River, does DNR have anything, any say over this?
Probably, um, I don't know that answer, uh, clearly today, if they do or do not, but we can certainly look at that further.
I'd assume they'd want some guarantee that there's not gonna be a lot of wash going through and directly into the Minnesota River there.
I kinda have a, the flipside question, which is the, you know, obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done to have this project go forward. What were to happen if nothing were to happen? If, if basically, we just let nature take its course? What is, in your opinion, what's the outcome?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, uh, and, and there has been some, um, review from a development perspective on, on particularly Mark Lano's property. And due to the topography, um, it's challenging due to the relief from sixty-one down to the site and also, uh, the relief from the site over to the properties to the west, Worm Property. Uh, if you study the six, uh, Carver County's access plan, you know, their, their preferred option is likely to move the access point, uh, north on sixty-one to the Worm Property and have that access come through, uh, the Worm Property to the site from a future development condition. And without, uh, filling the site in some form or fashion, it really, it makes development, um, challenging, possibly not feasible. So one of the benefits with this operation, as you can see, is, you know, we're not only pulling material out, but we're proposing to backfill and bring that site up in grade in a engineered fashion to allow for future, the potential for future development in a more feasible manner in accordance with the city's long-term comprehensive plan. If nothing would occur, it'd probably take longer time to develop that site. We don't know what that timeframe is, but we all know that, you know, development is, is moving in this direction and, uh, for the property owner, it gives ability to, um, hopefully bring that, you know, sooner rather than later. Any additional questions for either of us?
Anyone else? No, I think that's it from us. I would, this is, this isn't a public hearing, but if there's any, uh, questions in the audience that have answered, uh, if you want to, uh, take some of those for the, either for staff or for. Uh, please, come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Joe Atkinson, I saw my name up there, but I'm at thirty-eight eighty Chaska Boulevard. And, um, I guess this is great discussion. I'm, I'm glad to hear some skepticism or, you know, some, uh, good feedback on, on the conditions. One thought I had, uh, listening here was that if a condition could be to, um, have a project identified, like contract and signed and everything of, of, um, you know, that would, uh, limit that timeframe. So if, if it was, if, if there was some major project, light rail, you know, whatever they identified, but if that were known prior to starting any excavation, excavation to, um, you know, not have an open-ended five to fifteen and could go to twenty-five years if it's just, you know, wide open. If, if it can be, um, done in a limited timeframe with one big project, I would like to see that, you know, a condition of, of the, you know, of the conditional use, um, plan or whatever it is. So, um, that's just one thought here. You know, we do have concerns with the, uh, our, our property value. So, so thanks for, for bringing that up. And then one other thought, um, so that box culvert that currently runs under Chaska Boulevard is on our property, I believe, or, you know, it's, it's, um, and we've had erosion problems where the, the, um, the, ravine has actually collapsed and trees have fallen in on our side of the property. So it's, there's that huge, um, washout area, but it's also happening on ours. And, um, there, on, on the, uh, that site forces plan, they, they show a, a water or a potential water treatment area. And that, um, you know, that is not gonna magically stop in the, in, in the middle of the ravine. It's going to wash over on our side. And those big flood events, I mean, that, that's all sandy soil. And if there were, um, you know, some, you know, six-inch rain or something that could all wash out and our house is just, you know, right up above there. So, um, you know, if, I'd like to see flood insurance, you know, provided or, you know, something that, that, that protects our, our property from, from that kind of a, a unforeseen damage. Another thing is the, the existing creek that, that comes along our, our side of the, the property. That, I don't know where that drains from, but it's, I think it, you know, if it comes from Big Woods Boulevard or those new housing developments that are there. And, and I, I saw there's, um, more, I think there's a twenty-seven acre, section planned for residential housing. And, you know, where does that water go through? And it, and if it's draining in, into that creek, that, you know, natural ravine, that box culvert is like the, the confluence of not only the stuff that comes down Chaska Boulevard, but this other thing. So it, it all kinda sits right, right there. So, um, I'd like to see that addressed as well. Another, you know, as far as the, the overlap, I'd like to see the, you know, one stop before the other one started. And it sounded like the, uh, the, you know, repair of that, that washout area would, would have to be fixed before. But if all that were to be defined and kind of, you know, maybe some dates attached or target dates or something, but, um, that's, uh, you know, some thoughts we had, so. I guess that's it. Any questions for me or?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Norby. I, um, I'm at one-three-one Highland Drive, which is Carver. Highland Drive would be the road directly to the east or on the left side of the road as you drive up Chaska Boulevard. There's some other residents here from our neighborhood. And we were at the last, um, open house meeting and, um, I think our concern was really, really a number of issues. When we heard about the gravel mining operation, I think the concern was it was gonna be, um, something that we would hear and see and would maybe somehow jeopardize our property values. I think after myself, after hearing MBE talk about, um, the idea of removing the gravel and then bringing the property back up to grade, making it more developable and, um, and addressing the erosion issue, it, it seems like a pretty logical solution to a pretty big problem, which is the scouring and the erosion of that, that creek corridor. I still have, from my standpoint and my neighbors, have some strong concerns about noise, but not the equipment that's working on the property, but more the trucks that are gearing down and jake breaking as they come down Chaska Boulevard. That's, that's already an issue for us. Obviously, we built our homes there and we, we probably should've expected that or known that, but it, it's a pretty big issue. And we get the gravel trucks starting at six o'clock in the morning, jake breaking down the hill. The idea of putting an entrance with a hundred and fifty trucks a day on that curve would seem to be a pretty serious safety issue as well. You'd have to have acceleration lanes, uh, if they were heading, um, up the hill and you'd have to have bypass lanes, I would think, if they were coming down the hill. And then that again increases the, the jake breaking and the noise on, on our homes. So I think from my standpoint, I won't speak for my neighbors, but, um, from my standpoint, it's a noise issue, it's a safety issue. And it seems like their solution of maybe a temporary box culvert to cross that ravine and utilize their existing entrance would make a lot of sense. But long-term, um, a solution that would actually address more completely the erosion in that creek corridor would, this is an opportunity. They've got the material, they've got the equipment, their engineers got the know-how. Seems like it's a great opportunity for the city and county to address that issue, so. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, good comments. Anyone else?
Thank you for your time. Uh, I sat in the back, I couldn't hear very well, so I'm gonna try and talk a little louder. Council, this is Nate. Matt, I think you're online, hello. My name's Peter Carlson, our family owns, uh, my mom, our family. We've lived there for about forty years, three-six-seven-five, County Road one-forty. It's coming up Big Woods Boulevard. And you may be wondering, how do, how does that fit into it, right? That's the cemetery, that's that. Well, our, our property abuts this land to just the northeast of it. So when you heard the talk about the pit and how idyllic it is, you know, it's, it's our land that's there. And I, I wanted to just, thank you for, I know on a concept plan, you don't really hear feedback, so I appreciate you opening the floor. My, um, topic that I wanted to just address, right now, there are national builders, we're fortunate to be able to talk to them, who wanna put in forty to fifty to sixty houses just northeast of the current pit. So I know that we've talked about the current scope of what's happening, what's this gonna look like, but there's forty new homes coming. So I, I don't know that it necessarily changes their concerns, which are absolutely legit, but it's coming. And where I think it's relevant is for, you know, obviously, it showed up in the discussion around this as a community. Well, what about all these new homes? And here's this con, continued operation. Specifically, our property that's just to the northeast, it's got about a thirty-foot gap now from all the fill that's come in. So when we've talked about how do we level this out? Well, we've got all this water now running onto our property. These majestic oaks that are gonna be backyards, they're compromised. I reached out to Mr. Miller, he didn't respond. Now, I'm sure that the city staff will pick this up in the process. A couple ideas, one, perhaps this is just a condition that as the old pit is filled in, wrapped up, maybe the city requirements around water runoff could apply to that. Certainly, it's covered by the broad conditional use permit for this parcel. But certainly, it's in the long-term vision, right? Like this is coming, this is gonna be here in a few years. And it would be a shame that we didn't take all of this into consideration with this broad holistic planning. So, um, I think it's exciting. I think it's exciting what's happening in Chaska and, and I'm not here to stand in the way of progress, but I just wanna make sure that everybody's got a full picture. And we're thinking about these things, cuz these builders say to me, hey, there's a thirty-foot wall there. I've gotta talk to them, I've gotta explain to them. Yep, we're, we're trying to figure it out. The city says they can't do anything. We're gonna see what we can do. So anyhow, I know this is the first step, it's a long process. I appreciate your hearing us, all of the community members and myself, so, thank you.
Thank you. So is there a restoration plan for the existing site or the existing operation? I believe that's what he's referring to. There, okay.
You'll have to come up to the mic, otherwise they won't hear you.
Working on it. We're, we wanna get everybody together and go, okay, what, what's acceptable? I mean, uh, once everything is mined out, we're filling back up. We wanna find an acceptable level and drainage. And so an actual restoration plan and elevations, no, we don't have to develop. Or, you know, where the houses are gonna sit? No, we have conceptual ideas, but that's, that's it at this time.
I, I believe what he was referring to is the existing operations. Is there a restoration plan for the existing?
I couldn't even hear him, sorry.
That was Mike, I, I understood correctly, right? It's the existing pit to the east. That, that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's about a thirty-foot breakage.
Sure.
Which is about a sixty-foot fill for it used to be, forty to sixty.
So, uh, the, that would be Rick's decision, the owner on that. He, you know, he, it's in the, that's up, that's up to him, I can't.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking you, I just wanted the, the commission to have that as a consideration.
Alright, thanks.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online? Okay, thank you. Alright, I'll bring that back to, uh, back to the board or to the commission before we, uh, discuss a motion for the concept. Go ahead.
More of a procedural question. So we're, concept plan now, next step is, is preliminary plan. We've got a lot of unanswered questions right now, so I'd hate to just kinda rubber stamp it to get it to the next step and have you guys spend a ton of money and we're not sure. I mean, can we, is there merit to, to table this while they get us some more thoughts on, on, on some of our concerns here or?
Yeah, I, I guess, I wouldn't consider, if you all feel approval is appropriate tonight, a rubber stamp by any stretch, there's a lot of conditions that have been put onto that approval. And so the expectation would be that when they come back for preliminary, that there are answers to the questions that we're raising here tonight, which are reflected in the conditions, um, of the, of the concept approval. So I think, um, you know, you all, providing that approval helps to define, you know, what, what is it that needs to be addressed in that next step and what are those questions that you're expecting to have answers to?
I guess one of the questions would be, is there any points of concern tonight that are not in, already in the twenty-four?
Conditions?
Conditions, sorry.
I think we add a few, but I, on the other hand, I think they heard us too, so.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, and that's the normal process of the concept, so.
I mean, I, I get you there, yeah. You know, it's, it's my opinion on the process of concept, preliminary plat, final, that more or less, everyone has the right to come through with concept. I mean, we've seen concepts that are a little less than a napkin schedule most and, you know, so this is the part where we they see all these conditions and we can really fine tune at the preliminary plat, make sure that they understood that the conditions are, took some of the questions from Commissioner Riley and, and, you know, expanded on it and come back to us. And so this, I'm comfortable moving forward with it. They obviously have a lot of work to do. There's some concerns, but it would be up to them from here to prove to us that's, it's, they've, you know, allocated the resources and solve those concerns. And it's my opinion.
Is it fair that if they don't come back with the answers and they're, they're not acceptable to the residents, we're going to be adding conditions at preliminary?
I think so. Yeah, and that's the whole, that's where you really kind of nail it down.
I do have a question on the, the long-term side, I think. So talking the 2040 comp plan, so how does this area fall into play for what the overall long-term expectations are for the growth that we're obviously planning with the neighboring areas specifically for the stuff just off of, off of the county road?
When you think about the southwest growth area and the progression of growth through there, it really follows our ability to provide sewer and water service, right? And the way that we're planning that, the staging of that, you can kind of start at County Road, 40, Big Woods Boulevard. There's Founder's Ridge up there today. You've seen the application from D.R. Horton to bring the next neighborhood in. We kind of continue to progress southward from there towards 61. This particular piece of property is not in line to be served by that sewer as it extends south to 61. The sewer that would serve this currently ends where First Street kind of terminates around the Athletic Park area. So that sewer needs to be extended to this property in order for it to be developed. So it is going to be a number of years until, you know, that happens. Either that or a very aggressive developer who's willing to take on some pretty significant costs to do that. But I do think that you can anticipate that the Worm and Friends site, which is the neighboring properties that are served by that sewer that would come down kind of marching southward through 40. You know, next five, 10 years is probably a reasonable window to be looking at that occurring. Assuming development continues at its current pace, which has admittedly been pretty quick.
And I think that's the, that's the reason for the, you know, we know the sewer is a big concern for some of the other development up to the north as well too. So it's a matter of making sure where the connections were and how that was going to drive, you know, the, the additional growth that we have in that area as well too. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that you're going to see, you know, more residential occurring, right, around where this project is proposed.
Five to 10 years from now, assuming that's the track for the sewer.
And obviously us, the city extending the CUP for that parcel would need to gel with our expectations for the surrounding neighborhoods and growth as well too. I.e., where, are we, are we really going to open the door for a sand pit next to planned residential that's actually happening?
I think, I think that's, you know, that's, has to be a consideration, the CUP is how can this coexist, right? If it's going to exist, how does it best coexist? For the residential that currently exists, because there's currently plenty around it, but also recognizing that that's only going to increase during life of the gravel pit, so.
Okay. I think it's time to take a motion on the concept then.
I guess since I spoke the most, it's only fair that I make the motion, right?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Alright, let's do it.
And again, this comes with a level of trust that you're going to follow through and be responsive at preliminary?
Are you looking page two?
Yeah, I'm looking for the wording.
Page 200.
I can make the motion if you want a second. So I'll make a motion to recommend a city council approval of the concept plan for MBE excavating subject to the following 24 conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Brass. Can I have a second?
Commissioner Riley, I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and thank you for your help and input tonight as well and the rest, any of the rescue that spoke tonight. Alright, 70 on the agenda. Recommend approval of preliminary site and building plan for the 212 Medical Center. Ridgeview Medical Center PC number 2022-07.
Not sure my screen here. Alright, we have.
Alright, I think you can go, Liz.
We have a preliminary site and building plan this evening for the 212 Medical Center being proposed by Ridgeview Medical Center. The area or site is highlighted in yellow above showcasing the existing medical center layout. So it's right on the southeast quadrant of Chestnut Street, also known as Highway 41, and Huntermark Road. Highway 212 abuts it on its south side. They currently have existing access off of Huntermark Road. And what we, we like to break up the site and building as kind of the south and the north portion. So this, when we refer to the south portion, we're referring to this side of the building here that I'm highlighting with my cursor and the north addition here that I'm highlighting with my cursor. So just to touch on the planning process, we're at preliminary plan for this request this evening. They got concept approval in 2009 for this project. So we're at preliminary plan at this point and we'll have a final step or with the final plan if this moves forward. So to give a background and history of this site of approvals really dates back to May of 2005 when initial concept plans and site plans were approved as well as the rezoning to Plan Commercial District number 13. But then it was in January of 2009 when a revised concept plan came through for the 212 Medical Center that is out there this evening. Also at that time, preliminary and final plats were approved and preliminary final, preliminary and final site and building plans were also approved and the PCD district was also amended to fit more in line with the 212 Medical Center project. So at that 2009 approval, six stories were approved for the building at full buildout. However, when they did start the initial phase of construction, they only constructed four stories and approximately 159,000 square foot of building footprint. And then it was in August of 2012 that they came in for a preliminary and final plat to split the property into two lots as well as a preliminary and final site and building plan was approved for the north addition. So what I highlighted in the previous slide. And this addition added three stories and approximately 64,000 square feet of building space on that north side. At that time, a condition of approval was put in place as a mechanism to really be able to evaluate the parking needs of the facility as each addition comes into play. So all subsequent additions past the north addition would require site plan approval, so preliminary and final site plan approval so that staff and commissions can review the parking provisions at that time. So that's why we're seeing a preliminary site and building plan this evening for this addition so that we can evaluate that further. They did conduct a neighborhood meeting on January 6th. They did have a couple neighbors show up to that meeting who expressed some concerns and questions related to traffic, lighting, the future buildout plans and parking. So specifically what they're requesting this evening is preliminary site and building plan for a 38,800 square foot addition. That would be a fifth story addition to the south building of the medical center. And this is to allow them to expand their patient and surgery services within the building. This exhibit shows kind of the existing layout and some of the landscaping provisions out there today. So in total, the property is 14, about 14 acres in size. There are two separate lots. The one encompasses the north addition and the second one encompasses the south addition. With what's built out there today, there exists 223,000 square feet of building space. There's four stories proposed on the south side and then three stories on the north side. They also have a pretty expansive surface parking lot that surrounds all sides of the building, which totals 748 stalls. And then back during the 2009 approvals, there was an extensive berm and landscaping put in place along the eastern edge of the property to help with screening to the residents to the east there. So that still exists today. So with adding the 38,000 square foot addition, it would bring the building up to 262,000 square feet of building space. And when we provide our, or add our parking requirement code for the highest intense medical use, which is one parking stall per 250 square feet of building space, it amounts to 1,048 parking stalls required per our code. Again, they have 748 existing surface stalls. They've also evaluated a couple areas surfing, or surface parking stalls that would add 98 proof of parking on the site. So that would bring it up to a total of 846. They've also done a proof of parking evaluation if a parking ramp were proposed. And that's always been generally anticipated in, during the inception of this medical center is that there may be some type of parking ramp needed in the future. If that were to be implemented the way they have it laid out right now, it would provide 551 proof of parking stalls and bring the total up to 1,171 total parking. So it would, from a proof of parking standpoint, meet our code the way they show it. They're not planning to build that parking ramp. Again, this is primarily to show that the site can be parked adequately per our code. Again, that's just to show if needed, they're, they're starting to lay out a place to do that. A parking ramp would still require subsequent approvals from staff and commissions. So at the time that they seriously pursue that piece, it will come in at a later date. But for the purposes of meeting our parking requirements, they're showing it this evening from a high-intense standpoint. This slide shows kind of the anticipated full buildout of the entire medical center facility as well as a parking ramp being shown in there as well. What's being slated for right now for full buildout would be a total of 365,000 square feet of building space. That would encompass all six stories on both sides of the building, which was the initial intention for this site when it was approved in 2009. And this is for the purpose of showing the full potential of this building, having six stories and the square footage. That would be anticipated with that at that time. And then they've also shown some general drawings of what the parking structure could look like and how it would lay out from a circulation standpoint, just starting to touch on some of those pieces. But again, this is not being formally approved this evening. It's just showing how, again, the parking can be provided on site to meet our code. So getting back to the reasoning for bringing this through a site plan process is primarily to analyze the parking with this 38,000 square foot addition. So the applicant has done an updated parking analysis for the site to give us an understanding of kind of what's needed today based on what they're seeing out in the field of the facility. So they did do a study back in September of 2021, which ranged over a three-plus day period. They monitored all the ingress and egress out of, into and out of the site. And they were doing counts within 15-minute intervals of the site to understand the fluctuation that occurs there. So the conclusions of their studies show that the max parking demand that they counted over that period of time was a total of 432 stalls at its max point. And that was evaluated on the later morning of Thursday of September 23rd. So when you take those numbers, compare it to the square footage of the building, that amounts to a 1.93 parked vehicles per 1,000 square foot of building. So they took that number and applied it to the full buildout with this added addition of 262,000 square feet and equates 507 with the addition. However, they've also accounted for full occupied status of the entire facility or entire medical center. So they did add on 10% to equate for that. So in total, they see that there would be a requirement or need of 564 parking stalls for the 262,000 square foot building. So again, getting back to what exists today, they currently have 748 stalls of surface parking of surface parking stalls, which is 184 more than what is potentially anticipated. So there's about a 32% surplus on site today. And if you factor in kind of the proof of parking, just for the surface parking stalls, again, that surplus would go up. So at this time, they're not constructing any additional stalls with this, with this addition. The proof of parking shows that they can adequately park the site closer to a parking code requirement, but the real, or realistic needs out there that have been evaluated don't warrant that need at this time. In addition to that, with any other subsequent additions, we'll be going through the similar planning process for us to reevaluate the parking needs at each step that they come in for additions. So with what's kind of set up out there, staff is comfortable with what's existing, what's proposed and what can be accommodated, accommodated from a surface parking stall provision on site. Here are a couple renderings of some views of the site with the fifth story being added on the south portion of the facility. I think the biggest change here from a design standpoint is that the glazing is much greater compared to the other stories included on the facility. compared to the other stories included on the facility. They intend to do that with the sixth story as well, whenever that comes in. So it helps add some added interest to the building to kind of break up the massing. Here's more technical elevations showing that addition. So with that, we are asking to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan for 212 Medical Center and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. Also, just want to mention to people who are following this item that it is tentatively scheduled for the city council on January 24th. I should note that the location of that city council will also be here at the event center if people want to participate that way. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have the applicants in the audience as well.
All right. Any questions for Liz from the commission or Nate or the developer?
I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to say I'm excited to see it on the agenda. It's a great asset to the community. And from Leggith Ridge View, I have a really good friend that works over there. They do great work, like their product. Having a family here, I think it's nice that they keep expanding it. It's really nice to have the asset, so looks good. Don't have any questions.
I suppose what, more like specialty clinics and stuff for that floor?
Sounds like surgery.
Yeah, I would rather have the applicant answer that, just because they can better inform what it is.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paul Hamm, representing Ridge View, 500 South Maple Street in Waconia. First of all, thanks for hearing this tonight. Ridge View is just thrilled that we're here in Chaska. And again, just see great opportunities to better serve and expand the service we provide to the community here. Excited about adding this fifth floor and to really specifically answer your question, the addition of this roughly 38,000 square feet would really just expand a lot of the existing clinical and surgical operations that happen in the building already. So Ridge View is one of many tenants in the space, and so the project itself would involve expanding some of that existing space and moving around some of the existing tenants in the building. So it's just, it's kind of a lot more of the same, just expanding that work. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just curiosity alone. Adding a fifth floor with the ultimate, a sixth floor on top of that, why not do them both at the same time and just not finish off like the sixth floor?
I should probably order some pizzas and bring some pizzas in to help answer that two-hour-long question. We spent a lot, we spent a lot of time evaluating that.
Analyzing it?
Yeah, a lot of time. And so...
The University of Minnesota Children's Hospital did that, where they built the top floor and didn't finish it.
Yeah, when you look at it from a pure financial standpoint, there's a lot of financial benefits to raise that roof one time and build six and build that sixth floor out right now. But then there's also some carrying costs. So if we built that, we don't have a need for that square footage right now. And having it sit vacant, it would, is costly and doesn't generate the revenue. So and it takes longer. So we also want to do this as, you know, as efficiently and quickly as we can.
I know we've got, you obviously have ample parking. Has, will this add any stress to the, you know, to traffic in the area?
I'm actually going to invite Ed Farr, our architect, up to maybe tackle that question. If that's all right?
Sure. Happy to dance. Good evening, commissioners. Ed Farr, Ed Farr Architects, project architect for Ridge View. We did a parking study, not a traffic study. The nuance being we counted cars, as Liz pointed out, during a four-day period during the week in September. And concurrently with that, we did specific tenant, individual tenant questionnaires on how they're using their space or concerns about our people operating in full capacity with COVID issue going on. Are all the spaces leased? And we accounted for that with some adjustments in the numbers. So we feel very confident in our increase in parking counts up from that 423 peak that we had at one day of the four days, up to that 562, I believe the number was. So adding about 120 parked cars per day. Now, one of the benefits of a medical center is that we don't operate, they don't operate on the office rush hour peak like an office building or a school would have strict start and stop times. You'll see in some of the diagrams, if you looked at the traffic report, the ramping up of the parking lot takes about a three-hour duration from six to nine in the morning, and then that same three-hour duration to empty the site near the end of the day, as opposed to the spikes that a rush hour would cause. So, so that's a real benefit to the traffic system. We have our own signal, and that signal is timed such that whether there's three cars leaving or five cars leaving, it's a timed signal. So, so I don't know if I answered the exact question because we didn't do a traffic study. We did understand that on your city website, your 2040 comprehensive guide plan, you do have a nice map talking about street capacities and where you're at or over capacity with some colored street signs on your, on your map in the 2040 guide plan. And so we know that both Hunter Mark and Highway 41 Chestnut do have excess capacity at this time. We also know that there's a small micro problem, talking to the neighbors to the east of us, they have that, that school bus problem coming down Hunter Mark in the middle of the afternoon that causes congestion, which causes them some heartache just because of that school bus problem. They've got to hit the light at the gas station and where we enter, as well as then Chestnut Street. But in terms of capacity, there's plenty of capacity.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have questions. And obviously, it's, it's not pertinent to this specific request for the fifth floor, but point in time, do you see the need to actually have the deliberate conversation about the parking ramp in onsite? Because it's the piecemeal side of things, and obviously, you know, Ridge View knows the business and what, what's needed for their, their customers. But, you know, we also still have, you know, requirements for parking spaces on size of, you know, the facilities. So, you know, is it the next floor? I mean, to me, that's, that's the big question now. It's, it's good that we're discussing it.
Sure.
But then it's the, when is it really going to be real?
Sure, sure. And there's a lot of math involved in what Liz presented, what we're doing behind the scenes. Let me say that you're not unique in your selection of certain parking density recommendations for different, different building uses. That said, the, the four per thousand, one car for 250 square feet of medical clinic space is a general application of a parking density concept. The nuances of what happens in the building varies wildly from a more intensive use like the clinic space, which is more up at that four per thousand, frankly. But we've got other very less intense uses going on in the building that we monitor with leasing and square footage balances. That's why we know that there's a lower demand onsite. Surgical centers, the emergency urgent care, and other counseling spaces, things like that account for much less density than what your broad application of one per 250 applies. So, so as much as you, you can measure with that metric to our building because it's medical, those aren't the uses that are in the building 100%. So that's why we have done these more detailed analyses on a suite-by-suite basis, square footage by square footage. And so we anticipated the lower usage, the lower traffic counts because of the tenants that are in the building, and that's, that's the model that this is based on.
From a city process perspective, what you can expect is that as they come forward with applications to add, you know, the additional floors that were, that were thought about in the concept plan, that we would want to see a similar parking analysis done to understand, you know, what is that actually look like? Are we adequately planning for it? And that that proof of parking, right, at minimum, like they've done on this, on this application as well, is provided for. And so we don't necessarily, and this is common throughout projects in the city, we don't necessarily want to see parking built for the sake of building parking. It's not actually going to be used, but we want to at least prove, right, that the site, if needed, if that demand does materialize, is prepared to do that. So that's kind of that, the concept that we would apply in going forward. The process that you would expect to see is that we would want to see that sort of analysis completed and allow that to drive what should be built at that given time.
And the reason why I say that is because of the comment earlier, which is that, well, yeah, it's, it's better to raise the roof once, but economically, it's not. So we're going to see the piecemeal of each floor every time they want to make an expansion. So you could, so you can make, so you can make the math work to your advantage of not having to invest in the parking by pulling together numbers that are to your advantage of not having to make the investment. So to me, that's the part where it's like, you know, looking forward to the future, not necessarily, and like I said, not for this one, but for the next one or the subsequent one. When is it going to be real that the city's going to really put the, the stance that it needs to be addressed is really the concept?
You know, what we can say right now is that, that's something that gets evaluated at each step. So, yep.
I agree with, for a point right now, with parking's not an issue, but when you, you know, you get tight, because when you're building that ramp, you're going to lose a lot of spots too for a prolonged period of time then too. So then you...
And the last thing we want to do is manufacture any numbers and then fail. A lack of parking without any street parking, especially we can't spill it onto the street for obvious reasons, that, that's just, you know, business suicide. So it would be in our best interest to make sure that there's ample parking for our customers to make it convenient. Otherwise, people won't come.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else? Any public questions for us or staff or developer? All right. Not seen any. If we don't have any more questions or comments, I would take a motion to approve the preliminary.
I'll take that motion. Motion to recommend approval to city council of the preliminary, preliminary site and building plan for the fifth floor building addition at 212 Medical Center, subject to the following 10 conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Manski and Brass. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for your input and, and thank you again, Liz. All right. Next on the agenda, recommend approval of the S Lot in Ernst Home, Chaska Yards Concept Plan, Carver County CDA, PC number 2022-06. Liz, one more time, please.
But this still.
We have a concept plan in front of us this evening for the S Lot in Ernst Home, which they've dubbed as the Chaska Yards for this project. This is being proposed by the Carver County CDA. So the site is highlighted above. It encompasses two separate lots. One has the Ernst Home on it today. The other one is vacant, which housed the former S home. So these two lots are being looked at for the project this evening. It is within downtown Chaska, so it fronts on Walnut Street. There is a mid-block alleyway that abuts the western edges of these properties. And then there's surrounding businesses primarily on each of its ends. So in terms of the three-step process, again, we are at the concept plan stage. We have three steps or two more steps to go after this one. In terms of kind of the history behind these two sites, this might be a refresher for most of us, but the Ernst Home didn't locate or didn't exist in the location that it is today. It actually was relocated from the Fireman's, where we're sitting tonight, actually. It was located on the Fireman's Park site. And when that went through redevelopment, it was imperative to save the structure and relocate it in a viable location within the city. So it did get relocated in 2014 to the site that it's currently located today. And subsequently from that, in late of 2014, the S House, which is just north of where the Ernst Home currently sits, experienced a damaging fire in 2014. So that brought it down to a, a unlivable state. We did try to save the structure by going through two grant cycles with the state, but unfortunately, the financial component was just too major to try to obtain grants for it, and so it was subsequently demolished in 2017. So since that time, both the S Lot and the Ernst Home have been marketed together to be reused. So they have been sitting vacant since that time. So there's imminent desire to want to develop the property so that maintenance and attention can be provided to the Ernst Home. And just to bring you back a couple years here, we did see a concept plan come through in December of 2018, and then other approvals in April of 2019 for the site to be seven residential rental units, which was proposed by Tyson Tally. So two in the Ernst Home and three new townhome buildings, and then two in a carriage house building. That went through, got through preliminary approvals plus commentary from SHIPPO. Unfortunately, the project did not move forward past that point. Both the properties, just in terms of a historic background, the 211 Walnut Street, which houses the Ernst Home, is a historic property. It was built in 1884 by Andreas Riedley on the Fireman's Park site and then subsequently relocated here. It has a lot of significance due to its architecture and Chaska brick. So there is a need to save this building. And then with the 217 Walnut Street, housing the former S home, that was built back in 1886 by Joseph S., was also a Chaska brick home, but was covered by stucco when it was demolished. So tonight, we're looking at a new concept plan before you this evening. So that's why they're starting at step one. And this is to redevelop the S Lot and then restore, restore the Ernst Home. And with that, it would include four owner-occupied units. One unit would be in the Ernst Home and then three separate housing units with private yards on the S Lot. A detached garage is also proposed with parking in the rear. And then these units would be affordable units and targeted towards households at 80% AMI. This is just a very simplified existing plan, but the site itself is about 0.4 acres total in size. Again, you can see where the lot lines split. The S Lot is vacant. The southern lot has the Ernst Home. And then they have access onto that alleyway. And then to the south here, which I forgot to mention, is also a public city parking lot. Just a couple images of kind of the current state of the Ernst Home. And here is the proposed concept plan this evening. So again, four total housing units are proposed. The Ernst Home will house one housing unit, and then there will be three separate new structures added to the, the S Lot portion of the site. The intention here behind the layout and the design was merely to provide kind of a common area in between the units. So really, the, the central spaces, both in front of the individual units and on the southern side, would be shared space that people can gather in and use. There's some intention for gardening or other uses could occur kind of in the bigger central space to be more defined moving forward. There is a central walkway that kind of provides... There is a central walkway that kind of provides a central midpoint of the site and providing access to both Walnut Street and the alleyway to the rear, which would eventually be a sale concept. So this will provide a large level of continuity or connectivity through the site. So as you can see, there's alleyway access being proposed for the detached garage and parking stalls on the rear component. There's two additional guest parking stalls oriented off that alleyway as well. So there's a total of 10 parking stalls for the site, which is two above our parking requirements. I think some bigger ticket items is kind of how this edge really relates to this back Paseo edge. There is intention for this alleyway to be redesigned for this Paseo concept to be kind of a multimodal, but more pedestrian-oriented type thoroughfare for people traveling through the various blocks of downtown away from the highway. So this layout of the plan really starts to activate that area or connect to it. So the sidewalk in between the block or in between the site here really allows for that. Here's a more defined plan, kind of showing those communal areas with like a community patio and then lawn area with some gardening, some seating areas as well, to show how people can utilize these spaces. The unit that's oriented to Walnut Street is intended to line up with the Ernst Home and provide kind of a contiguous connection that's being proposed on the Ernst Home. So both of these showing to connect into kind of the central system here, which would ultimately get you back out to Walnut Street. Due to some of the grade changes of the site, they're proposing the retaining wall system to kind of wrap around this site that you see on the southern edge and kind of continue that through. There's obviously some pieces that need to be worked out, not just from a planning standpoint, but more so from a historic review process standpoint with both SHPO and the city's HPC and how kind of this edge relates with the historic district on Walnut. So things to kind of keep in mind moving forward. You can also start to understand kind of the private yard space that they are anticipating for these units. I think the delineation of these more so on the front side of, on the front unit here facing Walnut Street will have to be looked at a little bit more in detail where that occurs. But the intention is to have both the shared space, but also some private yard space for these people to utilize. And then I'll just provide a couple bird's eye view of the site itself. So if we need to refer to any of these, we certainly can through discussion. These are the floor plans for the Ernst Home, which is on the top images here, and then the individual housing units, which are on the bottom. The individual housing units will kind of be a split-level format, having, living on both the first and second levels that are proposed there. And each of these buildings will have three-bedroom units in all of them. This is the Ernst Home, so relatively pretty unchanged. There will be some modifications done primarily with the front porch and where it gets accessed, so that, those are details to be further refined. And then these are the proposed individual housing units on the S Lot portion of the site. The design of them will be lap siding is what they're intended, with some gable brook to kind of complement the Ernst Home style, some front porches as well to give a nod to the front porch on the Ernst Home. I would say from a staff's standpoint, there's some details that need to be further refined with these individual units from both complementary and compatibility standpoint with the historic district, but also locating next to a historic structure to ensure that the overall design provides that compatibility with its context and where it's located. So some things to work on for preliminary, didn't really note it earlier, but the parking stalls along the alleyway, the parallel parking stalls particularly, have to be further evaluated to understand how they access those stalls in relation to the alleyway and the Paseo. So one thing for us moving forward. And then further exploring the design details on the newer individual housing units to be more historically compatible, an enhancement to the overall design. And then working on, working with SHPO, who are an overlaying agency of the historic district and getting their review and comments to inform the next step in the process. So in conclusion, we are asking to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the concept, S Lot and Ernst Home, known as Chaska Yards, and then based on the conditions listed in the staff report. This one is also planned to go to the City Council on January 24th, which is in this event center space. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise I do know the applicants are here in the audience.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Go ahead.
Can I come up here?
Yeah, go ahead. Come on.
My name is Elaine S. I'm great-great-granddaughter of Joseph S., and I'd like to see the name remain S. Ernst instead of Chaska Yards. Joseph S. was a founding father of Chaska before Minnesota became a state, and I think we need to keep the tradition and the name going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, let's, yeah, go ahead.
Liz, with parking, you mentioned 10, accommodating 10. So was it four single stalls and then four park in front of the single stalls and then two parallel parking? You know, I suspect what will happen is people, the additional, you'll have four cars in the stalls. You may have some street parking. I assume street parking is allowed out front. And then there's that public parking area to the, to the, what is that, south? And is, can that public parking accommodate overnight parking when residents basically overflow into there? Because it's, they're going to want to be able to pull in and out of their stall without their spouse having to move their car.
For the parking regulation, if there's specific rules attached to that parking lot? I don't know if you want to answer that.
Yeah, that public parking, so there's the public parking lot to the south. And as part of the Paseo improvements, the city is also pursuing obtaining additional public parking on that block. So public parking, generally the way that it works downtown, is that it's not intended to be permanent or semi-permanent parking, right? So it's not intended where a vehicle can just be left there for multiple days on end. But if, there's nothing preventing someone from parking overnight in that, in that lot or any public lot downtown. So it may get used that way. I think as staffs evaluating this project, we found it important that the site at least accommodate, right, two spots per unit, which is what our requirement is. And, and so this is one way that the developer's proposing to do that. But, I mean, you're right. You know, someone might host Thanksgiving or some other holiday or something like that at their house, and, you know, that public parking gets used. But I think it's fair to say that public parking gets used for other residential downtown already too.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing, I really, I liked the comment relative to the architectural consistency with the S structure. I do think that that's important. And, you know, would expect to see, you know, something a lot more compatible with the historical, you know, significance of, of the Ernst and S families. So, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Couple of comments too. I do like the idea of the development. It's almost like a little micro-community, which kind of seems really cool. However, I think you're all over it. It sounds like you're going to want to see compatibility. Is the existing Ernst House, is that going to be 80% medium income as well? Because it's sizable, the difference in size is quite noticeable. You're going to have a pretty large, feels like it'd be more of a market rate, if you would, versus the three new ones, but if they're all intended to be the same. So I do like the idea, but I do think the compatibility needs to be worked on, which it sounds like you're kind of on it. And then with the alleyway, I'll be honest, I've been going like Monhanson's for like 15 years or something. I didn't even know you could go down that alley. I wasn't even sure. I didn't even know that was...
There's down there.
Yeah, so it'd be nice to get that figured out. So, but overall, I think it's a nice concept. And I like the, I like the idea of having a little, you know, it's right downtown, some formal housing, people would need it. So I think it's, I think it's a good use of the, of the land.
I have one more that just occurred to me. And I know there's been a lot of work, you know, about, you know, downtown, you know, with the walkability and access to the buildings off of Chestnut from the backside. So the, the walkway through this development, it may end up actually gathering some traffic, you know, pedestrians through there. How, and, and into that alleyway, is, is there something additional with the lighting that would be expected along that alleyway and, and the path, you know, from a, you know, pedestrian safety standpoint or just a resident, you know, security with, you know?
Are you talking about, you're asking about lighting and pedestrians, the alleyway or the walkway, kind of going through the proposed...
Really? I guess, I assume there's been some thought, you know, to lighting downtown for the pedestrian ways that are envisioned that would probably carry over to whatever is being done here.
As it pertains to the alleyway going north-south, you'll see those improvements occur this summer. So that alleyway's going to get rebuilt. The public parking is going to get improved. You'll see a lot of streetscaping and things go in there. That's going to really change how this all looks on this block. A part, a component of that is, is lighting. And that would be, you know, part of the city's improvements that are going into that alleyway. The intention is that it's used to access parking and kind of navigate deliveries for the, you know, for the commercial users on that block, but also make it very much pedestrian-friendly so that people have an alternate route beyond walking on 41 to navigate through downtown. So that is the intention, and lighting is certainly a component of that. As it pertains to that sort of east-west pathway that the developer is proposing and how they're intending to light that, I guess I don't know the answer to that question, but that, you know, that may be something that they want to take a close look at, what would be appropriate, you know, for the residential nature of what that's doing there. The intention is not that that east-west be a public passage, though.
I think inevitably it will be, though. You know, so...
It's reasonable to expect that some people will navigate that, but that's not really the intent of it.
Yeah, people walk, you know, as a bird flies, you know, so...
I'm Todd Grover from McDonald Mac Architects, working with Elise at the Carver County Development Association. Just to respond a little bit to the, the public, you know, access through there, I think the intention is to provide an access, but to really try to have it so it, it doesn't feel public. But people, I mean, we're going to have a number of families there, and so wanting to provide them access, especially if some of the internal units, having them feel comfortable. And so really what we're trying to work on right now is, is some of that kind of psychological aspect of how that detail works. And we're recognizing that maybe that, that immediate pass-through that goes through there maybe needs to be detailed and tweaked. And I think there's going to be a number of things, even like going up steps and maybe a gate at the, at the alleyway and some things like that, to prevent, you know, somebody who is, who is trying to always access that, realizing that's, that's a private side of the, of the block. But on that balance, also trying to provide nice access for the people who are going to be living there. And so I think that's some of the tweaking that we're working on and on some of that, that planning. But I think you're, you're right, lighting and other things going into it are going to help kind of trigger some of, of that idea of, is this going to be a public or is this a private? And really want, wanted, you know, maybe move more towards feeling like it's private, knowing that people will still use it. Public still may use it. I live in St. Paul, and there's, there's some long blocks that there's some public cross-throughs, but nobody except the people who live in the neighborhood uses, use those just because you're walking right past somebody's house. And so there's a, there's some detailing there that I think we're going to be exploring in, in the next steps in order to help with that idea of public access through there.
Thank you.
Fire department has not reviewed this yet, correct?
They have.
They have?
Yep. They're a part of every step in the process here. Aren't as, haven't had any serious comments from them yet.
And they're comfortable with it?
As we're aware, yes.
All right. I think we are ready for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approval of the concept plan for four housing units on the S Lot and the Ernst Home, subject to the following 11 conditions.
You, Commissioner Olson? Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Hi.
Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your inputs. And we are at our last action item for the night. 7F, recommend approval of the concept plan for five single-family lots on Sixth Street and Maple Street, Landmark Builders, PC number 2022-04. It's all yours.
All right. Last and final concept plan of the evening, but this is for the Sixth Street East and Maple Street, single-family lots, also known as the Fireman's Park Two site, being proposed by Landmark Builders. The site is highlighted in blue above. It is located in downtown Chaska, east of Highway 41. It's basically bounded on the south and west sides by Maple Street, and then we have Sixth Street East on the north side here. This, as you can see here, was a playground area and park area that was owned by the school district. The school district had put it up for sale, or marketed it for sale several years ago, but recently it's been sold and looked at for development. So we're at the concept plan stage, so we have two other steps after this. Yep, as I mentioned, it was owned by the school district, recently sold. It's never, it has never been considered a public park per our comprehensive plans for the very, very reason that it's never been owned by the city. It's always been in private ownership. And because of that, in our comp plan, we have evaluated a park search area for the easterly area of downtown, kind of generally over by where St. John's is, south of kind of where this subject site is, to really evaluate where a neighborhood park can go within that neighborhood area. This area and most of the downtown residential properties are zoned medium-density residential, and that will continue to stay with this request being proposed this evening. So they're asking for a concept plan approval of five single-family lots on that block. They did conduct a neighborhood meeting December 17th. They had some concerns and questions related to building height of the, the homes, construction traffic, the type of homes that would go there, the removal of the playground, and how the existing power lines would or would not affect the site. The site is one acre in size. Again, there's a small playground structure on the site today, which will be removed moving forward. There are some trees that kind of flank the south and easterly portions of the property. This is the overlay of the, the concept plan to kind of the aerial imagery. Sorry, didn't update my talking points here, but five single-family lots are proposed, which is actually in line with the other half of the block here. All of the facilities in terms of the street system are currently in place, so there's really not much change there. I would say the exception is, the city will be going through a downtown reconstruction of this area in the near future. So they have to account for that within their plans as they move forward, as well as thinking about timing and so forth. There is a plan to provide sidewalks all the way through this block, which provide some pedestrian connectivity for the overall area. Just wanna note that these will be front-loading lots. They will not be accessing, even though there's a mid-block alleyway shown here, there's a significant grade change between the mid-block area. And therefore, they're not using that alleyway as any type of access point. And that's true for the lots on the easterly side as well. So again, these will be front-loaded homes, which will match up, generally speaking, with some of the homes on the, the western side of Maple Street. Here's a more simplified drawing showing that with driveway access onto Maple Street. I think one of the things that will have to be kind of vetted out between concept and preliminary, as well as working with our engineering team, is understanding what's gonna be needed from a right-of-way perspective for the street that currently encroaches into the southwestern portion of the property. So the lot on that portion will have to be modified accordingly to account for this right-of-way acquisition, and show setbacks and so forth, and how that could happen. They're already showing a setback here to kind of make way for what could come, but I think it's just further defining that between concept and preliminary moving forward. So a couple of things to work on for preliminary, identifying any easements that may exist out there, primarily as it relates to the utilities that are there and what would be needed in the future. But also with the transmission line, pretty close to the sightlines, and how that relates to the property, as well as what the needed right-of-way is gonna be for the Maple Street encroachment. And then lastly, due to the fact, and this is pretty common within downtown, it being within a floodplain, that they meet the regulations in place for that, evaluate that further from an elevation standpoint in terms of where that is and how the, the homes relate to that as they move forward. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the concept plan for five single-family lots on Sixth Street East and Maple Street, and then based on the conditions that are in the staff report. And this one will also plan to go before the city council on January twenty-fourth at this building. Happy to answer any questions, the applicant is also in, in the audience as well, for questions.
All right, thank you, Liz, any questions for staff or the developer here?
Is you, uh, Scallop Park, is that, that's on the other side of forty-one? Scallop, Scallop Park, the nearest neighborhood, Shallow? Is that, is that the park that you showed us circled on the other side of forty-one? If I picture in this correctly?
Taking my orientations off.
East of the, of this site, so they're on the same side. So a couple of blocks, couple of blocks to the east.
Near the Sugar Factory. Yes, that's.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Four, four blocks, approximately four blocks?
The ways, yeah. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you have a question related to that, or?
I just, philosophically, I, I don't like the idea of removing a park, and it's, it's it's strange that we're doing that within our downtown area, you know, with that. You know, I mean, our goal as a community is for our downtown to re, redevelop and rejuvenate, and for hopefully young families to come back into downtown at some point. That, you know, you know, we've got all of these suburban, you know, developments going on with five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, and not every family, you know, can afford that. And so, you know, it tends to be, you know, just like the last development, we saw, you know, that, that the urban downtown, you know, can be an area for, you know, the more moderately, you know, moderate income levels to, to have a place to, to raise a family. So, so that, it just, it just, that's what triggers for me, is removing a park in an area that, that in my mind, we should be encouraging, you know, you know, that, that life cycle of the community to happen, cause our downtown is graying, getting older, and hopefully, you know, that'll, at some point, you know, we'll see more younger families coming back in, so.
If I can, if I can speak to the property, the history of the property is that it was previously owned by the school district. It, although it very much appeared and was used as a park, it's never been a city park. And so the, the city's, you know, the school district's choice to, to put it on sale and sell it to, you know, the person who's now looking to develop that piece, is a decision that the school district made, viewing it as excess property. Now, the city has identified in its comprehensive plan the need to locate park property downtown in this, on the, what, east side of forty-one. Although that hasn't been yet resolved, has been longstanding discussions with St. John's Church about the playground that they have to serve their school, and there's a, there's a whole lot of property that surrounds that, that the church has ideas about, city has been in discussion with them about. And so, you know, there's more discussions to be had, but that is one location that has long been thought of to, to potentially solve that park gap, right, that we've identified.
Did you say the developer is here? Could we hear from the developer, and then I'd like to hear the neighbor?
Question too, so the technicality is it was never a public park. It was private property, it was school district property that has just been used as a park over the years. Okay, and then secondly, the developer can answer this, but I'm just kind of curious, compounding on what Christian O'Reilly said, and I, I agree, I, you know how I am with parks, I'm always an advocate for getting the parks out there, but, you know, people can do with their land what they're ready, especially if it's not a park. But what is the intent of the, of the, is it gonna be moderate-level pricing homes? Is it gonna be on the higher end, like what kind of, what's the demographic that we're looking for? So this would be good for the developer?
Yes, hi, my name is Eugene, I am the owner of Landmark Builders, and these homes will, will, will be starting out at five-fifty.
Five-fifty?
Yep.
Wow, market is crazy.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Per feet.
How many?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred, okay, so about two-hundred bucks a foot roughly?
Around there, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Is, any questions?
Any other questions on the houses, then, we haven't, didn't see any.
Front-loaded garages?
Concept on the houses in the plan?
I didn't see any floor plans, nothing yet on floor plans for the houses.
And that, I mean, that's gonna be the next step, but yes, it is gonna have the front.
Holding edges?
Right, yeah, correct.
Okay.
I've got, I've got some floor plans here, it looks like three-car garages you're trying to put on these?
Three-car, yes. So questions ahead?
And this, kind of, if this squares up with the other side of the, of the block too, right? Now, one question I do have is on the, the curve. Does that, are we as close? Is that running right along the edge of the creek there, or? So that one lot is a, is an issue then, how?
You're speaking of the southernmost lot?
Yeah.
Yep. I do think that's one that we're gonna have to take a closer look at as we get into preliminary understanding how the right-of-way needs to negotiate through there, the setbacks that are required for that, and how, you know, how a, a building could potentially be situated within that if there were to be a lot in that location. So I, I think that is a piece of the analysis for the next step.
Is there any future plan to bury the power?
So that's a, that's an overhead, kind of high voltage.
I can't recall, that trends, it's always high voltage as transmission, okay, gotcha.
In fact, those were, I think.
I just can't visualize, I can't, I didn't drive by the site for this one, I can't just envision if it was high voltage or if it's, you know, variable power, no.
That would be something they're looking at.
Mm-hmm. And I'm just, this is now off top, not for you, but do, do you know what the school district was asking for the property? I mean, did the city look at buying this and keeping it a park? I mean, that's, I know, kind of just rand, it's kind of random, but.
I think it was considered, I think they did approach us to purchase it.
Yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't think that was the area that we wanted the park at, since we've kind of evaluated kind of the St. John's area primarily.
Sure, looking at that right now, yep.
So I think it was, it was surface level, because.
Well, I see why. Yeah, I see why St. John, I mean, it's more central. Yeah, yep, okay, and I, are they, are you willing to play ball, are they?
I, I think in, in the long term, there's a solution there. There's a lot of discussions that have been had, and I think there's a lot more conversation for a long time.
Yeah, okay.
But I, it's, it's a potential, I think it's something that everyone sees benefit in.
That's all I have.
Good question, just concerning, I, I know that we had the orientation all going towards Maple for all five lots, but, you know, is the potential that they could have the northernmost lot go to Sixth? And, I mean, I, I guess, is, is it hard set that they all have to be front-facing towards the west? Or depending on what comes from, you know, the discussions on how to best maximize, is there potential to be able to change things up for the, the driveways?
Yeah, I, I think from my perspective, you know, the solution for this area is just, is to comprehend, you know, what the street needs to do, what setbacks need to do, what the overhead lines are, if there's any sort of impact on that. But yeah, I think, you know, we can look at it and try to be creative, I think everyone's interest is to try to maximize what happens on that site. But we also need to be reasonable with what's gonna fit.
You'd have to have that defined by preliminary anyway.
Correct.
Well, or well-defined. I guess we have someone else, come on up.
All May five-oh-three Beach Street. There was a referral to a report from the committee to you people. Is that report available for the public to review? Because some of the statements that this lady made are inconsistent with the study that's done, that entire block is getting new sewer and water, street repair. And the statements that she made is inconsistent with what the street construction is. There, in fact, they can't put sidewalks in on two sides of it because there was insufficient room, and they can't be landscaped to be put in, you said it'd be sidewalk all the way around the block. It doesn't work. There, I'd like to see their report to you and review it for comment.
Sure, yep.
We'll do that?
We might need to get your email. We might need to get your email, or something, we can share it too, so if you're able to supply that to us, we can do that.
Want to expand on this, sidewalks not required, but it's something the city's looking to do to enhance the community?
Right. I mean, with any street reconstruction plan.
You try to get it, you try to get it in there.
Right, it looks at all the facilities that could be improved along that area. I guess, as far as we're concerned right now, they're trying to plan for it, from our engineering side, so, but we can share those details.
Great, and when is that street supposed to be done, Liz?
So the Don Con Street reconstruction program for this summer is looking at this area. You know, generally speaking, Sixth Street, Beach Street, Maple Street are included in that program. We're going through the process, our engineering is going through that process right now to figure out what the final, you know, what the final program is going to be, how it's going to be constructed, you know, where the sidewalks go or don't go. Some of that isn't fully resolved yet, so.
I mean, it's on the, is it on the calendar?
It is on the calendar, yeah, the intentions for the summer, correct, yep.
It was supposed to have been last summer, but they had to do forty-one and the, yep, that, and then also the box culvert across by the Head Start School. I'm Brad Hedman, I live at five-twenty East Fifth Street. Just wanted to touch base, the school never owned that the whole time, it used to be Fireman's Park Two. City always maintained it, city flooded it for a skating rink, we had a warming shack there. City pulled out the warming shack, then all of a sudden it belonged to the school about five, six, seven years ago. Number two, they're gonna have to bring in a hell of a lot of fill in there, I've lived there for thirty-two years. You get a two-inch rain, three days later you walk there, the water's over your feet. Truthfully, that is not a real good place to build, and by looking at that map, I'd hate to be the owner of number four, because they're gonna have a great big power pole right in their front yard. Right in their front yard, probably dead center of the driveway. So I, I think it's a big mistake taking that park out of there, there's a lot of kids. I hate telling them, you know what, there's no ice skating rink here anymore, you have to go somewhere else. You have to find ice somewhere else, when they took that away seven, six, seven years ago. So you're losing a lot of, a lot of young families.
Thank you. Are these, are these slab-on-green homes, or are they? They're slab-on-green. Any other comments, anyone else?
My, I'm on Zoom.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Barbara Ann, I live at five-oh-seven North Maple Street, so my property is running up against the creek on the west side of Maple. I'm curious if we're having road construction and housing construction at the same time, the amount of trucks that are gonna be coming in and out, and the access of us having to our homes and our driveways. If anyone could speak to that.
At, at the next level, what we'll wanna get from the developer is a construction traffic plan, so we can start to scan, shake up. I don't know, Nate, were you gonna add anything on?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's sort of two things going on here, there's the potential, you know, construction for what's being proposed on the site, and then there's also the street reconstr- and then there's also the street reconstruction. So, I just want the, you know, neighbors who are involved tonight to understand that as far as it relates to the street reconstruction, you can anticipate, there's going to be some meetings and outreach and things like that, that our engineering department will lead, which is standard process that they've done throughout all the street reconstruction that has gone on downtown. So, that process will begin. It hasn't begun yet, but you will be contacted and communicated with on how it's going to impact, you know, access to your property and all those questions, and have opportunity to have those discussions before construction begins. So, that's, that's the, the street side, right? There's also the, the project that's being proposed, and that, that's another conversation as well. I hope that helps.
Yeah, two separate projects. I think it's, again, worth, Liz has done it, I think, seven times tonight, pointing out it's the concept plan. This one's a little more minimal than some others we've seen tonight, but again, traffic studies and, and lot lines and lighting and all these things come into play at the next meeting to make sure that all that is taken care of. So, for people on Zoom and watching in the audience tonight, again, you know, with the concept out there, we look at it, and then you go from there.
East Sixth Street, so the park is our front yard. My kids have loved it as a young family. That has been a wonderful thing, so I'm sad to see it go. But long-term planning, I'm a little concerned about the buildings that are the warehouse buildings on Sixth Street, East Sixth Street, that if they were ever to sell, that would become zoned residential. So, now we're adding five houses, possibly ten, eleven, twelve cars. And then that whole lot that's leading up to behind Auburn Manor, I don't know what, if that's high density, medium density, like, would we put townhomes there? It's a lot of traffic on that street. As a young family, you know, my kids are getting a little older. I'm not sure I would choose to live on that street with that much traffic being added, long-term. They just replaced the bridge. It looks great, but buses come through there. The corner around Beach Street is tight. I've got new drivers starting in my household, and I'm, I'm concerned about construction this year, but long-term, really concerned about adding that much traffic and people on Sixth, and then around the corner into Maple. So, just putting that out there for consideration.
Please, I'd rather have the industrial buildings and more houses.
I don't like it, but I, when we bought the house, I never thought the park would sell.
Right.
I also didn't realize the amount of traffic coming for the Carver County School Building, where they do, I don't know what it's called, behind Auburn Manor. We've got buses. We've got young moms with little kids and strollers and car seats coming through there. So, I am concerned about. We also have traffic routing around Auburn Manor, because we can't go behind Auburn Manor, that street. Technically, the police stopped us, said we couldn't go through there where the old southwest parking lot is. I really dislike being routed through to Fourth Street, where the traffic is already bad, off of Fourth and Chestnut. So, I just feel like, long-term, there's going to need some, some traffic patterns looked at. And I know, the poor builder bought that. It's not his fault, but I really wish the school and the city could have worked out that park being, being used. So, that's sad. But moving on, just looking ahead to what comes next. After these five houses get put in, what's coming on Sixth Street, and how do we handle that amount of people in that small space?
Go ahead.
Fellow commissioners, I, I have a problem with this, and it's nothing related to the developer. It's, it's related to, you know, this park, that, like, removing a park is a big deal. Like, if the city, if a governmental agency, City of Chaska, Carver County, MinDOT, was building a project and they was going to remove a park, that's a whole public involvement process, where you would have public hearings. And, and there would have to be a one-for-one replacement. They're going to build a park somewhere else. You don't, you do not eliminate parks, so something has happened here. You know, because I, just looking, you know, in a Google, like, the, the park equipment's relatively new. You know, you know, this is an old, you know, iron jungle gems and seesaws that we grew up with. You know, this is, this is relatively new infrastructure, and one of the residents tells us that the city was maintaining it, mowing it, and the kids use it. So, I, I think there's, there's, there's a missed opportunity, and I, I think that this should go back to the park board, and I think there should be a public involvement process related to it. That, nothing against the developer, but I don't think the developer should have bought it. I think the city should have bought it. And, you know, and then compound that, you know, to, to build five hundred thousand dollar houses on these lots, I don't think is compatible, you know, with, with the downtown area either. So, you know, I guess, I'll throw it out there. I'm going to vote no. I guess I, I hope that some others join me and, you know, just put this on pause to, to let that public involvement process, you know, occur, instead of just losing this asset, you know, you know, because, you know, it looks to me like an oversight, so...
I'd like to clarify, so, to clarify question, I mean, has the city maintained this lot, or is it just the perception of the neighborhood that the city did? Was it the school district actually maintaining the lot? Or was there an agreement that the school district paid the city and we maintained it for them, or what's the actual...
I guess, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, what I know is most recently, it's a school, it was a school district-owned property.
Yeah.
The school district determined that it was excess property, and it was, it was in their interest to sell it. So, that was the school district's decision.
Was the school district owned that?
I would have, I would have to look into that. I can't, I can't give an accurate answer to that, but...
I was thinking that key tax, forgetting, is it isn't a park.
Not a public...
It was used as a park, but it never was a park.
It was Fireman's Park Two. There was a sign.
Owned it at that time, do you know, or for, I mean, for a fact?
I, I know for a fact that the City of Chaska mowed it. It's the same group that mows the city property dike and everything.
And so, mowing it, though, is a different, like, I can hire a landscaper to mow it.
Mowed it, they fertilized it, they did everything.
I understand that, sir. I'm just saying, like...
And it was a Fireman's Park Number Two.
Yeah.
The sign was there. As soon as the sign disappeared, now all of a sudden, the, the school owned it.
Well, that could very well be, the school owned it. The school could hire me.
Labeled Fireman's Park, like Fireman's Park over here.
Yeah. I just want, I'm just want to be technical for the record. I mean, the school can hire anyone to take care, they could hire me to do it, and I don't own the park.
And they flooded the park for ice skating. They maintained it the whole nine yards.
Back before attorneys got involved in everything, it was, it wasn't uncommon for cities to say, hey, we'll, we'll maintain it for you, and you own it, and there'll be no issues there.
Two years, and two years ago, this, the school district started owning it.
I don't, I don't think there is any kind of conspiracy, like, the school district just started to own it all of a sudden. I mean, there'd be, it'd be on the tax records. Like, if they owned it, they owned it. We can look it up.
Right. Do we know if the, if the board ever looked at that? Did the board, or is it...
They didn't, honestly, just because if we don't own the park, then they don't get involved.
Okay.
Just...
It was never something that they targeted, is if this ever comes available, that we should look at it.
What was the question?
They never kind of gave direction to say, if this, you know, this chunk ever becomes available, we'd like first offer or first rights on it.
So, I want to bring a hypothetical. So, let's say I live close to Jonathan Elementary, right? So, let's say Jonathan Elementary, at some point, they're like, we're, we're closing that school. And there's the, the big park behind there, that, like, obviously the neighborhood kids use it. My kids go, they sled back there. We drive them up there, and, you know, again, that would be out of our jurisdiction. They, they could, they could...
I want to clarify that example.
Okay, is that, is that, like, crossing lines now?
Jonathan Elementary is owned by the school district, that, that building, but much of the property that's to the north and west, McKnight Park.
The actual, like, the playground behind the school, like, the, you know, the hill is like part of the actual school, like, that would, if they got rid of that, like, that's...
The school district can make decisions about the school district's property.
Yeah.
City can make the...
Right.
City holds property as a park. There's, there's a lot of legal restrictions on our ability to do things with that, that would prevent us from turning it into something else.
Yeah.
And so, in the case of this property, it, it, it's not a city-owned property. It hasn't been a city-owned property. And it's not a city park. I understand the use of it, provided a different perception, but it, it has not been a city park. The school district owned it, and they had that decision and that right to make that decision.
Yeah, okay.
And I, and I'm skeptical that they followed proper processes in making that decision. You know, they are, they are a public entity, and I just, so...
Your concern, but I think it's, it needs to be understood, the jurisdiction, right, and the decision-making authority around the move that was made there. The city had no involvement in that. The city did not have an opportunity to have involvement in that.
Other than...
Because it's the school district's, right?
City missed an opportunity, then. It could be, and, and that's...
Again, that's a decision that is not necessarily in front of this body, and it's also something that has now occurred, right, so...
It is part of this body to say, hold on a minute, city staff. Take a step back and go look at the missed opportunity and see if you can rectify it. So, and that's where I come from.
I mean, you'd have to buy that land back at this point. It's been sold.
Absolutely, they'd have to buy the land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want the real history, I have lived on that corner for fifty years, and I knew Fred Brier. He had the brewery on the top of the hill. That area you're talking about that we call a park, that was part of his farm. The Klein Brothers bought that section and turned it into a clay mine for their brick operation. When the clay wore out, they dug the creek that's through there to get water to mine the clay. The Klein Brothers deed its property to the school district for playground, for playground, because there wasn't anything in the area for the school district to really use. There was a handshake agreement between the school district when they closed the school down there. They didn't want to maintain the property. It was out of the way for what they were doing. There was a handshake agreement between the city and the school district. The city could use it, have it for park as long as they maintained it, but it was school district land. The fire department, as long as it was parkland and the city maintained an ice skating rink on it in the winter, and did take good care of it out there. As long as it was already being used as a park and there was nothing in that area, the fire department purchased and put the playground equipment in. So, that was given to the city to be playground equipment in that park out there. Now, I don't know who gets the playground equipment now that somebody else bought it, but I think it should go back to the fire department, that they can reposition it for kids to use out there. But that's the history of the property. A lot of handshake agreements, and the agreement was the city could have it as a park. They maintained it when they closed the school down there. The property remained property of the school district.
Yeah, so I think that's good to know. I mean, it's technical for the record, it is school district land.
Yeah.
And, you know, it would make sense for the school district to reach out, reach out to the city and say, hey, it's in public interest. We'll let, let the property, until we sell it, we'll let it be as it stands. You guys can maintain it, or it's cheaper to do that than hire, you know, landscape company to come maintain it.
Basically, north side of that park, if you put a sidewalk in there, you will have about a thirty feet drop from the sidewalk to the la, the layer that the houses are built on. That's a heck of a hazard for people walking through out there. You're going to have to come up with some type of fence. On the side that I live, there is not room to get a sidewalk in, and each house on that side is on a different terrace. It's terraced in, be a real hazard, because it would be a, a long slant down. On my side, my house is eighteen inches off the property line, just two feet off the property line. There's no room in there, if you straighten the road out according to your map, there's no room left to put a sidewalk in there unless they're going to put it underneath my house out there. So, the only one would be the one on Maple. It's the only street that is set up that way. But there's a lot of problems in that area. That land floods. I don't know, I talked to the contractor who bought it. He wasn't informed that every time we get a half inch of rain, we got three weeks to wait for that park to dry out enough that you can walk across it. He wasn't aware of that. Whoever sold it to him didn't tell him that it had been a dump, that what's underneath that ground, God only knows out there. He wasn't informed of that. And the picture that he had, the corner that's now showing in the street, he got from the city, and that actually showed the property to go all the way across the street and take the power pole in there. So, I think the city did a, if the city sold it, or if the school sold it, one of them relied drastically on what was there and what was available out there. That lot has to be raised at least two feet. And the city has never maintained that alleyway. There's a dead tree in there that's going to fall over on my house or my garage out there. City doesn't want to do anything about it. So, but I would like to see the report that was given people out there, because I'm sure there's a lot of discrepancies in it that are not right. And as you said, I'll make arrangements, come up and read it. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm always a pusher for parks, and I, it's frustrating to me, and I agree with Commissioner O'Reilly, but as my professional background in real estate, I, unfortunately, I, I just, it's probably, unless you can prove difference to, on legal tax record, it's, it's private property, and it's been sold, and so the developer can do, I mean, as long as it's done, who knows, maybe it doesn't even go through or whatever, but, but, yeah, we might have missed the mark in buying this part, this, this land. I agree, Commissioner O'Reilly, but other than going back and, you know, ponying up even more now and trying to buy it from the developer, just...
Developer, are you also the owner of this property?
Yep. I mean, it, you know, it's...
Is this new information for you? Well, the, the condition of the land, the flooding...
You need to come to the microphone.
Come to the mic. And, you know, what the resident had said, I mean, all that comes out when you do your due diligence, when you're going to build your houses, they're going to do environmental reports, they're going to do boreings, I mean, you know, that, you know, so, that, that'll get filled in. I mean, that's part of their process to build homes, you know, it's outside of our...
We're going to do a drainage, you know, it's, we're going to raise it up, you know, it's not going to be the level that it's at right now.
I'd recommend that you and the neighbors, because I, you, you bet. And we'll continue to do so before this gets to the next step, so a lot of these concerns might get a chance. You may get a chance to get on the same page.
And I, you know, as far as the park itself goes, or that the city should have bought and put a park there, I can see why they would not have, because it's not a central location for a park. That's why they've been working with St. John's for years on up there. You know, you've got residential all the way around. This is, you know, back in the corner, where actually where probably very few people know it's there, you know, except the people in that neighborhood.
Okay, should we bring it back to a vote?
Well, I, 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 I hope we, I would, this is now more towards the city, more towards the city side of things, which is the, yeah, I, I get the fact of, I'll, I'll go with the fact of, yeah, it's, it's entitled Fireman's Park on the surface. Looks, smells, breathes like a park, but legality, it's not. So, now I push it back to the city, say, it's like, all right, well, you've been in discussions with St. John's for years... So now I'd push it back to the city, say it's like, all right, well, you've been in discussions with St. John's for years. Um, let's ramp it up because we're losing, the neighborhood is losing, we're losing something that was being used as a park. Now actually put actions in place to actually make it happen versus just talk with St. John's. Because, because of the development, because of, you know, what's going on, we're losing space. So it's, it's not necessarily a, a nice to have, it's a, well, we need to actually do something now. So that's more back towards staff to actually take action and do.
Be nice to get more aggressive on that front.
Right, I mean, obviously there's still negotiations and discussions, but it needs to have a different sense to it because of what's going on here and the missed opportunity. Um, with this, with this area and what the, the neighborhoods are losing, it's like, well, let's, let's find a place to replace it. And yeah, it is one of those things where who knows what's gonna happen when they go through the, the testing and analysis to see, it's like, is it really viable? You know, it's the first stage, so it's like, well, there's so many more hurdles that the developer has to cross before, you know, they're actually putting a, a shovel in the ground to do something. So that's, that's the part, we've got these processes to let it go through.
Concept.
All right, well, that being said, let's move this forward to, uh, I'll entertain a motion on the concept plan.
I'm, a motion.
Um, I'll let me find it.
Can you go?
Uh, I'll have it in front of me.
I, uh, I'll make motion to recommend the city council approval of Fireman's Park Two, Sixth Street and Maple Street concept plan for a five lot subdivision on one acre of land, subject to the following fifteen conditions.
No second.
Further discussion.
Bring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regent Lee, aye.
Hey. Commissioner O'Reilly opposed, all right, thank you, uh, motion carries. Thank you everyone for your input and well. Moving on to other business, um, like to receive in the meeting minutes from the December sixth, twenty twenty-one city council and the, uh, October twelfth, twenty twenty-one park board meeting. So those minutes have been read into the record. Uh, quick roundtable, anybody have anything they wanna bring up?
I like the addition of the, uh, the dates for when they're expected to go to city council. I like seeing that.
They're gonna have a, they're gonna have a busy meeting coming up.
Yeah.
Oh, you want mine?
It was very intentional, um, we did get some feedback.
Show how bad is the front end of my lot.
Now of those meetings, and I think that's probably an easy way to get the, the date out there.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
Yep, so we'll plan to do that.
Forward.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll speak. Right, I, here, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson and Brass, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. adjourn.